Everybody's here. It is the town council work session for November 10th, 2020. And before we get started, I just wanted to say a couple of words about the articles that have been in the paper the last couple of days about the executive sessions. It is within the realms of the law for a town council to go into an executive session pursuant to paragraph four E of Colorado Revised Statute 246402 in order to talk about negotiations and instruct negotiators. We had a potential negotiation with a developer who wanted to develop, who wants to develop on North Gondola and through that development had a couple of things that the council needed to talk about and then instruct the negotiators for the town, which in this case would have been Rick Holman and myself. During that executive session, everybody had a chance to communicate their feelings about land for a transit center and affordable housing on the subject property. During the course of the executive session, the council decided that there was no need for further negotiation. We came out of executive session. As a lead negotiator, I told everybody what we did as far as the negotiations and decided there would be no further negotiation on these two matters, and that was the end of the story. The newspaper decided that what we did was illegal. They called it illegal today in the newspaper. I disagree. I'm not a lawyer, but Tim Berry, who is our lawyer, also disagrees. So we wrote a Shannon wrote a long synopsis of this for the newspaper and the newspaper printed part of it, but not all. And I do not like the fact that we were characterized and I do take exception to the Summit Daily News saying what we did was illegal. So that's all I will say about that unless Mr. Berry has anything to add.
No, I, I don't like the fact that the council was put in the position that you find yourself in. I do believe that it was proper for the council to go into an executive session pursuant to the statute you mentioned, Eric. And it actually says for purposes of quote determining positions relative to matters that may be subject negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators. I think it's perfectly fair to say that when the council went into the executive session at the last meeting, we didn't know what that decision was going to be. And so I, I thought then I still think that what the council did was proper. I also need to, need to say this. The headline in the Summit Daily Journal that characterized the executive session as being illegal is just wrong. There is a dispute about what the council did in executive session, but the executive session I think was properly called. And as council may remember, remember, there were two other matters that were discussed in the executive session, not just the proposed contract negotiations. And I don't want to cast any doubt about those discussions being improper because they were part of a quote illegal executive session. That's all, that's all I've got.
Thank you. And just for the, the audience who is joining us this evening, and thank you for joining us. I want you to know that we had no point doing anything behind closed doors because we want to or we enjoy it. There are times though, when you do go into a negotiation that you do need to keep your cards close to the vest. You can't let the people that you're negotiating with know exactly what the council wants to negotiate about. That's in the public's best interest that some of those things be done behind closed doors. And that's what we were doing in the public interest. So I just wanted to let you know that we at no point are doing anything dishonest or out of the ordinary. What we are doing is in the public's best interest with a developer that's going to honestly build a massive project in the middle of town and was looking to do some negotiation on part of that with us, and we decided not to. And there we go. So with that, we'll move on to planning commission decisions. We have planning commission decisions for November 3rd of 2020. Any questions? Aaron?
Yeah, I would, I would like to call up or at least discuss a bit more of the Parkway Center parking. I have some real concerns about what impacts that will have to our locals and visitors using City Market already during times. It can be very challenging to get in and out of that parking lot. And I worry that 165 additional spaces right there will make it even more challenging in an already challenging year. We don't know what will happen with the Breckenridge reservation system. We don't know what will happen with restaurants and the need for the grocery stores. So I just, I worry that's not the right place. And I just, I worry about how much stress and strain that puts on our community.
Um, Rick, did you want to?
I guess I would ask if there's any way to have this discussion without doing a call up, because if we do a call up, we're going to lose valuable time on this. I mean, we're, it's a two week window already to get this operational, waiting for a final approval after tonight.
Can I ask, is there any way to do a temporary approval, like some way that we could try this until Christmas and then say this is not working?
I don't, I don't know if that's fair to the Breck Park because they're going to be putting money into doing some of this stuff.
Not only that, not only that, that wasn't the application that was filed.
is there any way to know anymore about traffic discussions that happened at staff level before we got this far or is that?
Well, I mean,
Mark?
I think we have a, we have a, I want to say a fairly good handle and familiarity with traffic patterns. And you know, that parking lot was parked for years when it was owned by the postal department and they actually allowed the skier to use it for probably, I don't know when, at least the first five or six years I was here, we were parking vehicles every, all the time in that lot once the, the Gondola lot filled up. So you know, that lot will fill. We know historically on what days that lot will fill and it will probably fill within a matter of 30 minutes to an hour and it will empty out around that, you know, probably in less time than that. And it will be very specific times of day that you will see those impacts, but there will be increased amount of traffic entering off of Watson Avenue to go. Not Watson, French, to go into that, into that lot via that south access to City Market. So, but it will be limited to certain times a day for sure.
Do you want to add anything?
Um, Eric, if I could add, um, yeah, staff did discuss this a fair amount beforehand and Rick's absolutely right. I think it's important to note, it's a very short window of time that there'll be additional traffic on that access road off of French into that parking lot. Like he said, it'll probably fill up in a half hour or so in the morning after they fill the South Gondola, the North Gondola lot, then they'll go there next, then they'll go to the Gold Rush lot. It's a very short window of time. And in the afternoon, actually what typically happens is you have a staggered leaving of the guests don't all leave at once as much. So we don't anticipate that that would be a huge issue either. There will be a little more traffic for that short period of time. Like I said, the other key consideration is that the alternative to not having this parking in this location is we have people driving by and essentially circling, circling through town, looking for parking in other locations. And we basically get a lot more cars getting into the core, whereas we could intercept them right as they're entering town and bring them into this parking lot.
Does anybody else want to call this up this evening?
I guess, can I mention one other thing that concerns us as we go into, as we go into winter, we're really concerned about our ability to move people from our outer parking lots with our limitations on transit and, and ridership on those buses. And so, you know, we've had, we've had recent meetings with the skier to talk about operations. And, and while I, I respect your concern and it will create some additional, you know, gridlock in that area at certain times, certainly when you add more cars, the fact, uh, you know, we're really counting on the ability, we think that that's a necessity almost to park these people because we can't move them from the airport lot at 12 riders per bus. You know, it's just, that's going to be almost impossible to do. And so the ability to park them within walking distance of that Gondola, I think is, is really important. And I think that's a trade off for some inconvenience, you know, with increased congestion in that area.
You know, I, I totally understand Aaron's concern on, on this. But having heard Mark and Rick on opinion, I think we're going to make it as easy as possible to do business this winter, especially with, with, I think the vaguenesses of what's going to be happening with this ski season. So I'm, I don't, I don't choose to call this up personally, one person.
I agree with Jeffrey. I, it's a list of evils. I mean, Aaron brings up a great point. It's, it's certainly going to bring some pain, but I think not doing it could bring a lot more. So I'm in favor of approving this. You know, and I'm, I'm sure that, you know, if we recognize issues that can be addressed that this will be a fluid process. I, you know, the skier has a history of working with us and, you know, in this stuff. So.
Keep in mind guys, that the decision to call it up can't be made this afternoon. It'll have to be made this evening. So you shouldn't necessarily indicate what, how you're going to vote if there is a request to call it up.
I didn't do anything illegal, did I again?
No, no, Jeffrey.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Aaron, you can still request that it be called up tonight.
Well, okay. Um, I also just, wait, if I request to call it up, then we vote then on the call up and then there needs to be a certain amount. Okay. And I can do that. I also, I don't want to waste people's time tonight either. If I'm the only person that feels this way, I just, I feel like it's, I understand the need for it, but I just feel like it's in the wrong place for our local workforce and the people who need to get in and out of City Market. Um, so yeah, so at the same, like I totally understand the process. I just also don't want to waste time tonight and I won't fall my sword for it. I understand if I'm in disagreement.
It is definitely not a waste of time for you to call it up and it either passes or not, Aaron. That's not a waste of time.
Yeah, that's the way the system is designed to work.
Are there any other questions for staff at the moment?
Not for staff, but I would love to hear more of the concerns because yes, there is going to be more traffic, but I agree with Rick is the time of day, you know, that's going to be clearing out at that 3:30 to 4:30 range. Um, and they're going to park it accordingly. I mean, we've already lost the South Gondola lot to the parking structure. So I'd like to hear more about it, Aaron, if you've got concerns.
Oh, yeah. So I'm concerned about the ingresses and egresses.
Hold on, hold on, hold on a sec. We get, we'll do this tonight. Let's just, are there any questions for staff? And then tonight, when we go to call it up, we can talk about this a little bit more than.
I have a question for staff. Just wondering, is there any way or an enforcement plan to make sure that people won't park in the shopping center parking lot? Has that been considered?
They, uh, they work with Breck Park. I believe they were already working with, it's actually Interstate, right? Interstate runs Breck Park and they had contracted with them, I believe, to, to help enforce it last year, last season, even before this. So they'll, they'll, not only will they be the ones doing the actual parking of the vehicles in there and, and you know, ensuring that those vehicles have to pay to park, but they'll be making sure they're not illegally parking in City Market.
And I would just add to that Carol, that Dick Bowder owns that whole parcel. And so he had to, it's Interstate has planned to enter into an agreement with him for the use of that parcel. So there's some consistency between the management of the parking area for skiers and the parking area for shoppers.
Other questions? Okay. So we will get to this later during the regular session when it comes to planning commission stuff. Are there any other questions on planning commission decisions? The distillery pavilion? Anybody? No. Okay. Legislative review?
Yes. Rats to, um, Lowell Moore and Jay Beckerman for their new titles.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's awesome. Beckerman, quick riser, right? Didn't we just put him on?
Three months ago, two months.
Marijuana housekeeping ordinance, Tim?
This ordinance comes on tonight for second reading. It is necessary to adopt the ordinance so that the references in the town's marijuana licensing, licensing ordinance to the state marijuana laws are correct. Legislature recently changed all of those statutory references. As a result, our ref, the references in our code book are wrong. This ordinance will change those references and update some terminology to reflect the new state law on terminology for marijuana related businesses. There are no changes from first reading.
All right. Thank you, sir. Questions for Tim about this? No? All right. Disposable bag fee ordinance, second reading.
This ordinance comes on for a second reading. Jesse is here to answer the technical questions. The only change that I'm aware of, council will recall that when we discussed at, at the time of the first reading, that there was a reference to 20, a date in 2020 that needs to be that same date in 2021. That one change has been made to the ordinance. Jesse, do you have any other things you would like to speak to?
Um, no, Tim, Tim's right. We didn't make any substantial changes to the content of the ordinance, but I did just want to mention that we are currently working on an outreach plan. So, so if this was adopted tonight, we would reach out immediately to businesses kind of with the announcement and the timeline and what that means for them. And then we have a couple of different avenues to touch base back with the businesses again in the late winter, early spring, and again in the summer, right prior to the plastic ban portion of this ordinance going into effect September 1st, 2021. So we are working on that outreach and we are already communicating actually with the folks that get the Breckenridge reusable bags from the town as well. So we've already started some initial outreach with those folks as well.
It's important that everybody understands what we're doing so they don't buy a two year supply of bags. They just buy a single year supply so that when we get to the end there, they're, they're out. I don't real, I really do not want to have a conversation next fall. I just bought bags. I didn't know this was coming. So, and you know, we will. But you know, this is an important one that we get out there early. So thank you, Jesse. Any questions for Jesse or Tim on this one?
Jeffrey, when you make the motion tonight, please refer to the form of the ordinance that's in the agenda packet, please.
All right. We have the moratorium extension ordinance memo. This is on amenity clubs. Tim?
Several months ago, the council adopt, adopted a moratorium ordinance on the submission and processing of development permit applications concerning amenity clubs. This ordinance, well, the amenity club moratorium is scheduled to expire very soon. This ordinance would extend it for another six months to give staff and, and the council additional time to decide what type of regulations, if any, the count, the town wants to implement with respect to amenity clubs. One thing I want to point out to the council, we had some discussion, I guess it was last week, our last meeting about whether an amenity club associated with a timeshare would be subject to this ordinance. And the answer is yes. The order, the original amenity moratorium defined an amenity club to include amenities associated with timeshares specifically. Um, so, and there's no proposal to change that definition, but I know there was some discussion about that before, and I want to make clear that if the amenity, the moratorium is extended through this ordinance, it will basically preclude anybody from submitting a development permit application that would include an amenity club as part of the application. And that would include, but not be limited to timeshares.
Thank you, Tim. Questions? Yes, Kelly?
If we got a proposal while we're in this moratorium, would it be subject to whatever the next thing, the next way we decide to deal with mendy clubs? It wouldn't be grandfathered in to the way we were, okay?
No, and that's exactly why you do a moratorium, Kelly, is to, is to preclude somebody from submitting an application and kind of sliding it in before new regulations are adopted. So that's why the, the ordinance that's in effect right now precludes the filing of a development permit application that includes an amenity club. The planning department simply could not take that application. And since there would have been no application filed, any, any change in the law would have to be accounted for when the application comes in later.
Thanks.
Other questions? All right. Everybody good with this for tonight? Excellent. Uh, next up, the 2021 mill levy ordinance for first reading. Brian?
Hello, everybody. Each year we are required to set our mill levy in the town by ordinance. So it's a two reading process. We set it at the 5.07 mill levy rate. That is the amount that we're allowed to set the rate at. We can't change it without an election, without a taper election. This year is not an assessment year, so the 5.07 is really only going to generate about 1% more than it did in 2020, about 3.5 million bucks.
Thanks, Brian. Questions?
This is just something we do annually. Sorry, Carol.
Yeah, every year we have, I'm sorry. Yeah, every year we certify, it's called, we certify our mill levy to the county. This is part of that process and they actually put it on the bill and they collect it and they remit it to us. So every year by ordinance, yep.
And Brian, the 1% increase, since the mill isn't changing, the assessment rate isn't changing, that almost 1% increase, just for there being more property that's being taxed?
That's exactly right. New construction is usually the cause there.
Good questions. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Brian. We have the 2020 model traffic code adoption.
That's me. The state traffic laws require that, well, provide that local governments can have their own traffic rules, but that those traffic rules, at least as far as the rules of the road are concerned, have to be the same as state law. So that, you know, there's not one set of really traffic rules in Breckenridge and another set of traffic rules in Frisco. From time to time, the Colorado Department of Transportation publishes a book of traffic laws that can be adopted by reference by local governments and made their own traffic rules. And the reason you want to have your own traffic rules is so that you can write violations of those laws into the town's municipal court. This ordinance, if adopted, would update the town's traffic code to use the 2020 model traffic code, which has been put out by the Colorado Department of Transportation. One of the things the council can do as part of its local traffic code is to adopt some rules related to traffic that are unique to Breckenridge, not rule, not the general rules of the road, but other things like parking places, for example, parking on private property and so forth. This ordinance, if adopted, not only adopts the 2020 model traffic code, it amends it in a number of ways to reflect some local traffic ordinances. And those changes that are set forth in this ordinance are essentially the same ones that are, are already in effect because they were used to amend a previous version of the state model traffic code. So this is kind of updating the town's traffic rules, making them match the state rules in almost every instance, but having yet some local concern or local control over certain rules.
Everybody understand? Any questions?
Hey, Tim, page three, right around line 39 or 40.
Okay.
There's a lot of us going to jail because we've pulled our kids on sleds on this street for a long time.
Speak for yourself, buddy.
Yeah, yeah. I have no children.
I want you to know that.
Well, Dennis, I would, Dennis, don't say anything that could possibly be incriminating here. But this, just so you know, this, this rule that's in this ordinance has been the rule in Breckenridge ever since I've been here. So it's been a number of years back. It's also the state traffic law. So just be careful.
What about people skiing down Ski Hill Road? Are we going to outlaw that now?
It's always been, it's always been against the law to do that.
Yeah, it is.
Eagle Road, that's why they ski down it.
Oh, Dennis. Any other questions? All righty. We have unclaimed property ordinance.
We had all the exciting stuff tonight.
Yeah, trying to get to it tonight, man.
Into the year stuff. The town as a home rule municipality has its own ordinance dealing with how we handle process, dispose of and, but hopefully return found or abandoned property that this town staff comes across in their ordinary course of business. Couple of, two years ago, the Colorado Legislature adopted a state law, which is a uniform law adopted by a lot of states dealing with unclaimed property. That state statute is the one that is the basis for the ads you hear about the state treasurer having property. And you can go online and check and see if, if the estate has something that might belong to you. The local government, in this case Breckenridge, it's a burden on the staff to try to comply with the new state law with respect to reporting, transferring the, the property and so forth. The new law specific, new state law specifically allows local governments that are home rule municipalities who have their own ordinances in place to keep using their local ordinance instead of complying with the new state law. One of the conditions of being able to continue to use our own ordinance is that we have to hold onto the property for the same period of time that the state has to hold onto the property under the state law before this disposed of. And that's the five year period. This ordinance, if adopted, would bring the town's current unclaimed property ordinance into compliance with the state law, the new state law, and allow the town staff, primarily the police department, to continue to hold and dispose of unclaimed property as we have been doing historically.
Any questions?
Does this include like the rec center lost and found?
Yes, ma'am. That could be that. It could be a pair of ski gloves that are turned into the police department or, I mean, that, that kind of stuff. And it's amazing how much there is.
A lot of stuff left on the bus.
Yeah. So we would prefer, staff would greatly prefer to be able to continue to do essentially what they've been doing under our under our current ordinance with the exception that instead of being able to dispose of the property, the found property rather quickly, the state law now will require us to hold on to it to at least five years before we dispose of it.
Everybody good with that? Missing anything, Jeffrey? We still have it, if you are.
Yeah, I'll keep, I'll keep an eye out.
All right, golf cart lease ordinance.
Jeez, this is action-packed meeting.
Yeah, you better be ready.
This is Scott.
Hey, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor and Council. I want to start off initially and acknowledge a huge error on my part. This lease pertains to the GPS units that are attached to the golf carts. So everywhere, every place it says golf carts in there, we want to say GPS units, yes. So numbers are correct, the, you know, we have the correct lease. Now it's not the ones included in your packet, but we do have the ability to. Ultimately, the reason we're coming before you now is to get approval for a multi-year lease of the GPS units that serve on the golf carts. I learned this today when I spoke with Errol. He did want to point out that the GPS units essentially cover their own cost over time because the increase in golf cart rentals is significant based on when we last put these, when we first put the golf cart, sorry, the GPS units on the golf carts four years ago. So everything else is accurate in there, other than the fact that we are really targeting the ability to lease these GPS units for four years. We want to get it done as an emergency ordinance so we can, so we can have Rick sign this agreement and get it back to the leasing agent in time to get delivery of these carts on May 1st. As I mentioned in there, the carts themselves are actually gone at this point. We have no more carts in the building. Those carts are going to be purchased in the standard purchase agreement, but these GPS units will come with them and will be leased for a period of four years.
All right, thanks, Scott. Questions?
I thought these were the most affordable golf carts I had ever heard of, but now they're just expensive GPS units.
I apologize. That's, that's on me. I apologize for that.
Tim, if one was inclined to make a motion due to Scott's mistake, how would, how would, would I just say the, how would I phrase that?
Well, I think, I think you would, in your motion, direct the town attorney to change the approving ordinance to conform to the fact that the lease applies to the GPS units, not really to the carts.
Okay, that would be in the, okay, okay, I get you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Scott.
Thanks for fessing up, Scott.
Yeah. We have the TOB Title VII, Title VI Plan, sorry. Title VI Plan. Hi, Jennifer.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. So I have in front of you tonight is a memo explaining the Title VI update and the resolution for Town Council to adopt after your review, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone? Yeah, Dick, please.
I have a question, but I have a comment. You know, I don't think this is the right spot, but I do know that, that our transportation system is, is you know, it's on the list to be looked at by the social equity group to, you know, just to ensure that, that we've got, you know, full equality and, and inclusion in our transportation. But, you know, it seems to me this is pretty boilerplate and a requirement to get federal dollars. So it's, I'm not sure this is the place where we would go to discuss it, but just if people are wondering about that, I wanted to just make that comment.
We can certainly add something like that when there is a review of our transit services, just in this plan for when it's updated in 2023. I think it's always good to show that we're doing something in addition to what is required by FDA.
Well, we'll probably get started before then, but yeah, that, that's great.
Excellent. Anything else? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
We go on to the manager's report with public projects update. Hello, Shannon Smith.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. We just had the one project that's ongoing in the memo on the Wellington Streetlight purchase and rewiring, but I can take questions on anything else.
Questions for Shannon?
I want to make sure everybody understands that the construction we're doing around those streetlights is basically to put a meter on those. Because now that we are going to own those, we have to be able to meter those. If we want to get what we consider the, the good rate from Excel for our streetlights, they have to be metered separately so that we can ensure that we're not running other electrical things off of that, that line. And that's the reason that there's excavation. There are certainly no plans at this time to go in and add additional streetlights or anything. But it does give us the control over those lights in the future.
Thanks, Rick. Everybody good with this?
Yeah.
All right, Shannon, thank you. We do have ridership numbers. A lot of red, unfortunately.
Eric, I got, we have a couple of transit things I want to address, but you know, I can save those. They're related to COVID, what's going on, so I can save those till the end if we want, when we do all of our COVID update stuff.
Why don't we do that?
All right.
So with that, we'll go on to the BCCAC meeting report, housing and childcare update. Kelly, are you doing this or is this?
Well, yeah, I am doing it and I think the memo is mostly self-explanatory, but I did want to go over a couple of things about Breck Montessori because that was the question that the council had tasked the childcare committee to look at. Because as you guys know, we bought the facility about five years ago, which is the case with all of our childcare facilities. We do own the building, so that's kind of the norm for our community and that just really helps keep expenses down. Although we didn't intend to keep it, a few of you probably remember that Gary Gallagher, before he left, said that we, he would really not expect to get rid of any property that the town owns, especially a special place in our historic district on Main Street. So although, you know, it is, it was an expense to the town, I think that with property values always increasing, we could at some point get rid of that if we really needed to, but I don't think that right now we, that is something that we're looking at. It is a pretty small building. It's like maybe 1,200, 1,500 square feet. And there aren't, you know, a ton of uses that are just banging down the door to get in there. And Breck Montessori is really, really valued by about 17 families that it services. It has a good price point. It regularly updates their families to find out if their schedule, which is a little bit shorter days than some of our other facilities, if that meets their needs and they're, the families that go to the school have regularly said, this meets our needs, we like it, it's perfect for us. And I think Beth has done a really great job providing a really unique experience in our town that, you know, quite frankly, I think people in Denver drive a long way to get to these schools that are different and special and I think we're very lucky to have Breck Montessori. We, as a committee, did look at the places, the number of spots that they currently provide, and we know we have a very long waitlist and it's important to always be looking for better ways to accommodate that. And as such, the committee is planning and we actually engaged a firm to do an analysis to see if any of our, a capacity analysis, to see if any of the facilities can be expanded or add another room. And Breck Montessori will be part of that analysis, but because it's not completed right now and because we desperately need those 17 spots, we, we would like to make a recommendation to Town Council that I just closed the report that we enter into at least three more years of a lease with them. They've been in there five years and they're very happy there. They'd like to stay. Our, the rent before was 2,500, but we're, most of that money was just going into the childcare fund, which would, you know, generally be used for facilities anyway. We're requesting that we could reduce their rent to 2,000 a month and that would allow Beth to hire another person for part-time and it would free up some of her time to do some more director roles, including continuing education, being more involved with the other large centers. We think that's really important for her. She's been a very willing person to talk to about if we did sometime have another center and I'm certainly not committing to that and we don't know if that's the best thing for our town. But she is very willing to talk to us about being a director in, and, you know, a different facility. And so we think it's really great that she continued to develop as a director and be involved with the other centers. And I think that's the only things. Is that right, Rick? That we're requesting?
If the council was supportive of, of doing another additional, what are we doing five years again, Kelly? I think we need to do another five years or what?
Well, we had, we had said three years, but I, I think they would love five years. I think.
I don't think we're going to have it. It gives us a little time to do that. So we'll put together a, since it's a long-term lease, it'll have to be approved by the council, so we'll, we'll put one together and bring it to you. Does anybody have any concerns with the proposal?
No, I'm good with it. Everybody good? Yeah. I, I have one other thing, Kelly, that I wanted to bring up in front of the whole council and that is this ballot measure for April of 2022. One of the things that I believe is that ballot measures need to be community effort and you have to go out and get the right amount of signatures. One of the things I hate is when the council just does a ballot, puts something on the ballot without doing the legwork. And I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I would not be in favor of just doing a ballot initiative as a council thing. I would rather there be a group that goes out and gets the requisite, requisite number of signatures to put it on the ballot. I think that's a better way to, for community engagement. I think he gives you a leg up at the ballot box. I think that's the way you get something like this passed. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
You know what? I agree. I have found that people who sign the petition are more inclined to make sure they vote for the petition and it's just public information though. But certainly I'd have no problem putting it on the, on the ballot as a, as a council. I think it has a greater likelihood of success if, if we have a working group gather signatures.
Is there a way to have a hybrid of that? Because the one thing about a group going out and getting signatures is then you have to live with the question that they produce. And so if you want to guide, if you want some input into guiding how that question reads and what that, what those uses could be for. So if, for instance, if it was some additional short-term rental tax and you want, you, you didn't want to limit it to just childcare, but maybe also for additional, you know, new developed routes or additional routes to feed, a feeder routes on your, for your transit system or something like that in the future, you know. You, you want to have some input in how that's crafted, I think. So.
Well, I don't think that Eric was saying like some random group come in and do this work for us. I think, like, my understanding now, and I misspoke in an earlier, well, we had formed the committee, but apparently we can't have formed the committee. Council needs to appoint a committee, right, Rick? To.
See, I, I, I think we got confused on that because typically I'm, I'm not aware of us having appointed committees in the past to work on this kind of stuff. Usually these committees, so when there, when there was the question that came up on the member marijuana sales establishments in the core of town, there was a separate committee that was formed away outside of the town to spearhead that. The town had nothing to do with the appointment or anything of that group.
Okay, well, I guess I know that Carol has been really, you know, talking to us a lot about how important education is, Eric. And I think that she is, she probably aligns really well with what you're saying is that there's a huge education campaign that needs to go on behind this and it sounds like maybe Cory and I need to talk to some more to Tim Berry and really find out how to get this process moving. Because I think we thought we'd had like a mini kickoff, but then we sort of pulled the reins in because we weren't sure we were doing everything by the book. So we will definitely, education will be the most important part of whatever we move forward with and we'll talk to Tim about the appropriate way to get that going.
Along with education, I think it's important that we get community input as to what the question is, what the mechanism is. We need to educate the community. We also need to listen to the community to see what are the needs and with that, what would be more likely to pass because that's what we're hearing from the community.
Great point.
Can, how's everybody else feel about that, Erin?
Good, all good.
Dennis?
In agreement.
Okay, so Carol and Kelly, can you sort of?
Go through me, Eric.
Yeah.
You guys hook up with me and then we'll loop Tim and Helen in on the conversation so we can. Because I would like to make sure that there is an opportunity for the council. Early on, before we do anything, is when you have an opportunity to talk about it. What are, what would we support too as a council? I mean, do we just want to focus on one thing? Are we willing to, to cast a little bit wider net to give us some flexibility? You know, like I said, and maybe one or two things that we know are going to continue to be funding issues for us going down the road. But I think you guys need to weigh in on how you feel about that. So we'll, we'll, we'll start talking sooner than later because I think early on in 21, some things need to get happening here.
Excellent. All right, thanks, gang. Anything else on childcare or housing? Okay, committee reports. There was a police advisory. Any questions? Dick, anything to add?
We had, we had some good discussion around the, you know, the data. I know Dave Asklin brought that up and we had some real good discussion around, you know, is there any implicit bias in, in our police stops and you know, how can we ensure going forward that, that, that that doesn't creep in? So, you know, and, and I think it was left that more to come, you know, I think again, as the Equity Commission is formed, you know, I think that'll be in their wheelhouse and, and, you know, work with Jim and the PD to to get a sense of accountability there. So it was great discussion. It was one of our better discussions in quite some time. So it was good.
Good. Thank you, Dick. Events.
Mayor and council, you have the minutes from the last meeting in the packet. One thing that we wanted to bring back to you and Dick can hop on and help me with this. So the BTO has been working on two kind of reimagined versions of Uller and Snow Sculpture. And instead of an Uller parade, they're going to have, I think it's five locations where they'll have floats like stationary displays or animations that are representative of Uller. And then they'll do the same for Snow Sculpture, which is not a competition this year. It's more of a, a display, bringing back sculptors who have won in the past and are within driving distance and can easily get here and not have any issues. So the, the plan is, and hopefully you saw in the, the minutes, to have these in these five different locations. One of the locations is the very east side of the ice rink. And some of you may recall, it's an area where in the past, I don't know, it was probably three or four years ago now, we expanded that parking lot into some vegetation or dirt area on the end there. we expanded that parking lot into some vegetation or dirt area on the end there. So it's in that far east corner of the lot. And it would take up ten spaces. So from, I think it's January eighteenth through February seventh, we would either have snow storage there. Normally, snow storage is in the horseshoe section of the Tiger Dredge Lot. But this year, they were planning snow storage for that far east side, ten spaces. And then that would get distributed out to all five locations. But they would like to build a block and have a sculpture in that same space. So over the course of those ten days, for part of the time, you'd have some snow there, and the other part of the time, you would have a sculpture there. We didn't want to approve the use of the ten spaces without talking to you first. We know that spaces are at a premium this year. So before we give those up, we just kind of wanted to run that by you. Dick, did I forget anything?
No, the only thing I might add is, you know, we were also concerned about additional drive traffic to see the sculpture and, and Lucy and, and, and the team have assured us that they are gonna do a strong messaging campaign around public transit and, and walkability. You know, for Isaac as well as for the sculptures, so.
How does everybody? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, just one other thing I forgot to mention. I, I don't have an update just yet, but we are also looking at whether or not we could leave the snow at the ski area. And so maybe shorten that amount of time that those spaces are taken up, but I don't have an answer on that yet.
Thank you.
Yeah, they make, they make the snow in those flats adjacent to the Beaver Run parking lot. And we've asked the ski area if, if we could just store it there as opposed to take, bringing it into town. And then just bring it into town to fill the blocks.
Thanks, Dick. Jeffrey?
Shannon, like, are, are these sculptures going to be kind of estimated to be the same timeframe as far as how long it takes these artists to create these things? And my question is, you know, when it's at the Riverwalk, there's always a kind of convenient warming location. But on some of these areas, are there, does every, every, you know, kind of proposed location have a place where these guys can get warm? Or, and, or is it not an issue because they'll be built and they'll be created at a faster rate of speed than, you know, these guys go, they go for a whole week and sometimes they work through the night?
You know, I did not ask Casey how they were handling the actual sculptors. I know they, in the past, they've had pretty stringent criteria for what the, what the BTO would provide for the sculptors, to make sure they were warm and had food and power and all those things. So I would have to check with Casey and just see, you know, confirm that they have that all planned out for them. But I know Casey's done a lot of work on it, and I believe she's covered all her bases.
Okay. Other questions? So, go ahead, Aaron.
Oh, just a comment. It's, it's hard to think about what will be like in a couple months or a month even. I, I think we really need to be cognizant of where we are with our COVID numbers. It's hard with the amount of traffic that we're seeing in Breckenridge. It's hard to imagine that these won't look like, you know, very large groups all gathered together. And I know right now it's not supposed to be more than ten. I understand that it's an event. But at the same time, I just have concern of spread and where, where we'll be and if we're contributing to it. I don't mean to be a downer on this. I love these events. Normally I would never say this. I would never think about this. I would be celebrating it. But I, it's, it's hard to know what it will be like. I just know where we are right now, and it's a little scary.
Anyone else? So I'm, I agree with Aaron. I'm also a little concerned about the ice rink and the Bee, and Beaver Run because no, nobody will walk to these. I mean, they are definitely within walking distance. People do not walk to the ice rink. And people do not walk to Beaver Run from town. So that, I brought this up with Shannon already, that I'm, you know, I'm worried that these are gonna be just, it's just gonna be more people in cars. You know, I don't know if there's any alternative. It's just something that I, you know, and I understand Lucy's messaging. The buses that go to Beaver Run, then the buses that go to the ice rink, I don't know. I, I meant to look and see what kind of timeframe those were on, if you could be on the same bus and go. And, you know, how that's message is gonna be really important. The other problem is if we're still on twelve people per bus by then, that shoots the whole bus thing. And people are definitely in their cars. And this, this is the solution to sort of Aaron's issue with having five blocks that we're all near each other and people sort of mass congregating. This is to spread them out and spread the people out. So I don't know what the solution is. This is probably better than having mass congregation around five blocks. But it does concern me that in, on those weekends when we're super busy for snow sculpture, these people will just get in their car and drive to them. So I don't know how the rest of you feel about that.
I think we will still see mass congregation around these individual blocks, similar to what we're seeing with the Troll or what we saw going into the fall with the Troll.
I gotta tell you, that's my biggest concern is that we are creating, we are creating something that is gonna draw people to it for mass congregation. And that's probably the last thing we should be doing right now. And I think that we felt this need and desire to try to, to find alternative ways to do some things that are such iconic things for the town. But, you know, I mean, we have a letter from the, that I wasn't gonna bring up, but we have a letter from the governor that we need to look at internally, that's asking local governments to please join the state. The state is gonna have every employee that's not essential work from home the whole month of November. And they're asking for just everybody to join in on this stuff. And I think, you know, we've got to do some, make some drastic changes.
Yeah.
And, and I just don't know how much this stuff's gonna turn around. And we're, we're gonna plan something that, you know, are we willing to pull? If, if, if things aren't any better, are we willing to, to pull the rug out from under this and say no to it? One week before it happens, if things aren't any better. Because right now, if this was happening next week, I would say, yeah, we shouldn't be doing this.
And I think we have to be the example. I feel like the town has to be the example. Because people will look at these examples and say, oh, well, there's, you know, I'm just having twenty people over to my house. It's not the hundred people that I just saw at the snow sculpture. So I think we need to lead by example.
What's the lead time? What, what could, how, how long before the event itself could we say no?
I'd have to check with Casey, but I, I mean, I, I certainly hope with all the conversations that we've had that people know that anything can happen, right? There's the possibility at any time that we may have to cancel, whether it's an event or a meeting or whatever it is. I mean, I think that we all know what kind of situation we're in. I'm sure that there's probably a date where BTO would say, boy, we'd love to know whether it's a week or two weeks out so that, you know, people can change their plans. But the idea is that all of these folks, sculptors that are coming are within driving distance. So, you know, it's not as complicated as we're flying people in from another country.
You know what?
Certainly set a date if you guys wanted to say, okay, we want to look at where we are at a certain point and have a kind of a go-no-go.
You know, Shannon, like you say, you know, we, we know what situation, you know, we do know the, what the situation is. Everyone in, in this, on this screen and probably most of the people attending, because we get kind of these daily up, updates of what's happening with COVID. I don't know if the, I, I, I hope the community knows what's going on. I mean, anywhere from eighty-eight in a weekend to another forty-five on, on any given weekday. We're getting more and more incremental cases every day. So I'm like, like Aaron and Eric, I'm concerned about this as well. I, I believe we could be creating an attractive nuisance, but I'm hoping for the best. But I, so far, these numbers have not given me any, any, any motivation for optimism.
Yeah, I mean, if you recall, we talked early on about just not having any events this winter. You know, and originally is what we said, we're not doing anything, you know? And I, listen, I appreciate everything the BTO is doing. Uller, Snow Sculpture, I appreciate these things. But I, should we not be doing, doing any of this, you know? And, you know, maybe, maybe at the meeting on the twenty-fourth, you know, although, you know, is that getting too close to time where we just say, you know, nothing? And maybe, maybe we, we let Shannon talk to Snow Sculpture and Uller and sort of find out, you know, what's our drop dead date on these things? And then at the next meeting, we can make a real decision on it.
Bring it up, Eric, we could bring it up also tomorrow at our resiliency committee.
Okay.
They haven't gotten into events. I think from the, there's certainly some from the, you know, community aspect of that to weigh in. But why don't, why don't we put this on hold? Let's do a little more work and we'll come back on the twenty-fourth. I'd like to touch base with BTO a little more. Having heard, it, it appears the majority of you are sharing similar concerns about whether we should be approving what is, in essence, a type of event that we know will draw some people to the community.
How's everybody feeling about that?
I mean, if our numbers stay this high, I'm certainly in agreement. But I know a lot of work is going into it. And, you know, the work started back when our numbers were okay. So, you know, this is ever-changing as Shannon said, so.
I think what I would do, Dick, is I would look for a, I would want to say, you know, let's look, is there, is there a time? When would they have to start this? Maybe by end of, you know, mid-December, end of this, give it, give ourselves thirty more days? Maybe if we can do that to see what it looks like, and then we could make a kind of a hard call on it at that time. I want to see if something like that is doable.
And in the meantime, we could put all the teams on notice that it's, it's not a definite.
I guess here's the real question. In the end, why do we do this stuff? We do it to bring people to town. This last weekend, there was no reason to be here. We don't have skiing. The weather was, the weather was nice. There's no reason to be here. We were overwhelmed. We were that, we were so busy. So if, if you would have had an event this last weekend to draw more people here, it would have been the wrong thing to do. And if we're not back to level one by the time these things start, or level one or better, it's the wrong thing to do. Even moving to level two, I don't think, being at fifty percent, it is the right thing for this council to do to approve bringing people to the community. They're, they're gonna come to ski already. I'm, you know, the, every restaurant, retail is already hamstrung. Right now at twenty-five percent, I hope that we're at fifty percent in December. But fifty percent's not even enough to have events. So I think that's the, I think, I think we as a body need to look at that, that greater philosophical discussion of, at what point on that dial is it adequate for the BTO to really do a couple of things to bring some people to town?
I think that makes sense. I think the people of the community want us to make that decision at the appropriate time. Like Shannon's idea of if it's thirty days out or if it's ninety days out, we need to make a decision.
Okay, everybody good with that? So we'll let Shannon get some more information. We'll talk about it at resiliency tomorrow. We'll talk with Lucy and her team a bit tomorrow. And then on the twenty-fourth, we can make some kind of broader decision. And we'll have more data in two weeks as a council about where we're trending. If things are not better in two weeks, you know.
I think we're gonna learn a lot from Thanksgiving. After Thanksgiving, what's?
Well, yeah.
That's gonna be a.
Of course, the problem with that, Jeffrey, is Thanksgiving, you know, two weeks after Thanksgiving puts you in the middle of December when we start getting busy for real.
Yeah.
And the wheels are coming off by that point, so.
Yeah, good point.
All right. Anything else on events?
Jesus.
Jeffrey?
Oh, sorry. I'm bummed, man. I mean, I think everyone here, I think I can speak for all of us. You know, we have this idea of what Breckenridge is, and now because of, of this pandemic, Breckenridge is not what it, what it was. And we hope to get it back to what it could be, but it's very depressing.
It will be though. We will.
Yeah.
The, the fortunate thing is, this is not a forest fire that decimated just Breckenridge.
Yeah.
You know, it's a pandemic. This is every place in the world. I mean, you know, fortunately, everybody's on the same team on this one. This is not just, you know, one little town that's, that's having issues. So, you know, there, there is that. And if anything, we, I think we're in a good position that, once we let go of the reins a little bit, people will come here like you see them coming here right now to just walk around because they feel safe here. I think that's more of our, our community burden is to maintain, you know, and, and I know we've gone off that lately, but to maintain that, that safety that we definitely had all summer. We gotta get back to that. That's, that's the first thing we need to do as a community, so. And we will talk about that shortly in, in the COVID update. I'm getting ahead of myself. Let's, uh, let's talk about this maintenance policy for deed-restricted neighborhoods, and then we can have more COVID discussion. Hello, Nicole.
Hi, Mayor and Town Council. All right, a little buffer from COVID Talk, like you said.
Thank you.
You know, they, thanks for taking the time to discuss the maintenance policy for de-restricted neighborhoods. Ultimately, the purpose of adopting a maintenance schedule is to support our de-restricted neighborhoods by incentivizing maintenance while still preserving affordability, because that's also super important. You know, as our de-structured or inventory has aged, we have, you know, twenty-plus-year homes. There have been issues that have risen from lack of homeowner maintenance. Some of these major issues include, you know, maintenance just not being done because it's not a requirement of the de-restriction. And this can lead to greater health and safety risks for future owners and for even current owners. We've seen that increasing, you know, inadequate maintenance can also create a financial burden on buyers and owners. And ultimately, the lack of maintenance negatively impacts the value of the home and the character of the entire neighborhood. So the, the policy proposed in your memo would apply to each de-restricted neighborhood. And the maintenance allowance would be specific to that neighborhood based on purchase price, permitted real estate commission. If exterior maintenance is covered by the HOA, and if the neighborhood is on what we call the preferred covenant, which has that two percent fixed a few years ago, a lot of our neighborhoods opted into the new covenant template. You know, by basing the allowance of that, of the maintenance on these items, we create, we create equity among the neighborhood maintenance, and we also can preserve affordability. And so this memo, it proposed a list of items that we, we permitted for maintenance and also a schedule for how old the items would have to be to be replaced and how old they could be and still be added onto the sale price. This limits items just being replaced for taste and also not allowing older, non-functional items that will need to be replaced soon to be added to the final sales price. And if the council does support the adoption of a maintenance policy, it, staff would bring back the final version of a maintenance policy in the town's housing guidelines. And, and it would be adopted through that mechanism, and it would apply to the neighborhoods in that way. So with that, I would like to open the conversation for questions, including the list that I had included in the memo. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Let's do some questions first, anybody? I know everybody's got opinions about this one. No questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Aaron.
And I apologize because I'm not sure I fully understand the, the changes in the percentages. But my overall question is, will this mean that the price of homes goes up? The overall price will go up?
Uh, it depends on the neighborhood. For example, in Wellington One, where it would be a seven percent, we're basically saying that you can use five percent of your real estate commission that you're kind of already allowed to go towards maintenance and then add two percent in real estate commission on. So in that case, it does not, it's equal to the commission that's already allowed to be added. For the Wellington Two, Lake Park version, that one, it. For the Wellington Two, Lincoln Park version, that one, it it does a little bit. It's because we're proposing it would be two percent of a real estate commission to be added and three percent maintenance. Right now, a three percent real estate commission is allowed to be added. The reason why we say final sales price, but I actually would say that it's still more affordable is because we've seen a lot of cases where because maintenance and things like that are not allowed to be added to the sale price, we're seeing personal property sales outside for because that we don't, we just can't limit that in our covenants, like the sale of a trampoline, we can't limit that. So we'll see things like furniture and appliances and things like that, and there's not a lot we can do, but through this policy you we the owner would agree that they can't do that. And so it would be them getting a better house and then the new buyer not having to pay some outside price for items that really should be included in the home. And then in the newer covenant, we had a low lower real estate commission that we implemented, and then also the two percent fixed. And we had done that with the thought in mind that maintenance would be a part of that overall, you know, sales price in the future. So we kind of limited the real estate commission and appreciation to allow for that type of addition in the future. So it's kind of a three-tiered question because it's neighborhood specific, but I would say for the Wellington to Lincoln Park conversion, that's the only one where technically it would look that way, but I think under the table, probably not.
Okay, so owners can current, and I guess this is something I didn't know. Owners can sell the appliances even if they replaced, because the the original house came with appliances. They can then go ahead, you know, buy different appliances and then sell it to the new buyers?
So our policy is that it needs to have it needs to have the appliances in the house. But sometimes we see there's, you know, basically they say, okay, I'll put old appliances in, but I'm going to take my new appliances or I'll sell them as like an option to the new buyer. So it's kind of like a gray catch twenty-two thing where they're saying they'll put old appliances in and then take the nicer ones, and that usually the buyer wants the nicer one. So that just doesn't happen like all the time, but it it is something, you know, you it's hard to protect that like to the very grain of things in a housing restrictive covenant. And that's why this policy will allow us to have more control over that process if they did want to use some of their kids have some proceeds from the maintenance they did do and and it wouldn't be on the buyer to have to, you know, put that aside and some other way to pay for it, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
Nicole, when you say two percent for real estate, is that two percent total? Or is it two percent per side seller and buyer?
So this would be two percent total that could be added on to the sales price. Now, that's not limiting that you couldn't pay them more through your proceeds or whatever, but it would be two percent total right now in the guide. We have kind of a range of real estate commissions across our covenant. We have like seven all the way down to like a ratcheted point five to one percent. And, you know, the housing team has been kind of looking at, okay, what happens when you're really bring it down that low to one percent? And we that in those situations, we've seen more for sale by owners, which can be a little challenging. We definitely want to support the use of realtors in the sales of de-restricted homes to ensure the homes are in good working order. That's really what they're there for is to make sure that process is smooth. So we've we've seen that two percent and where it's one and one, that it's more doable for the realtor and they're not eating costs. So that's why we were supporting a two percent.
Across the board, it looks like.
That's kind of what we'd like to have a standard expectation.
Great. Can I ask another question about the timetable for maintenance items?
Yeah.
So I understand that it's difficult to do an appreciation calculation, but this like some of this stuff at the seven-year items, so you're telling me that if I paint my house and then I live here for six years, I can put that cost into the cost of the home?
That's what we're proposing. That's that is what we're proposing. And I think you know, whether I don't think people actually paint their house as frequently as they should. Usually, it is, it could be expensive, but you know, that's one I think that, you know, could be either or, I think people probably do it more at the twelve year, but it's better for the siding itself to do it more frequently.
The amount, Nicole, just to make sure we're clear, the amount of money they get back for painting their own is dependent upon how how long ago they painted it, right?
Yeah.
And. What you said that I thought this whole like paragraph was like appreciation or the depreciation is too difficult, so we're not going to do that.
Yes, so it would basically be at this point in time, you know, if it's older than seven or twelve, then it cannot be added. But you know, then if you added other things and it could you could have had this like bank and you can do other items, you know, that you could do.
But these don't depreciate. Like if I painted my house six years ago, I would get the same amount as if I painted my house yesterday.
Yes.
Yeah.
That doesn't make sense.
No, some of these I don't think fit in the seven-year items then. Like, I understand we don't want them just willy-nilly doing that, but as we've seen, most people aren't doing it. And so maybe there's, if we don't, if we really are adamant that we can't do a depreciation schedule, then I think like at the very least, we should have another category of maybe like four-year items, seven-year items, twelve-year, I don't know how to do that exactly, but like kitchen appliances at seven years and exterior paint. And I don't know, maybe even fencing, some of these things after seven years, they look terrible. And so basically, the purchaser is paying for them twice.
Okay, I think that's a good point. We can definitely look at maybe giving up the items a little bit more.
Yeah. Hopefully.
Five, eight, twelve, or yeah, it's kind of hard because they all have different, everything kind of has a different lifespan and you know, the the what's hard with the depreciation too is that it's hard to say, okay, you're going to buy this house for this much and then, but you're also going to lose. It's hard to really explain to them what they're going to be able to sell it for because of the depreciation continuing to occur. And that's another reason why we thought that it would be more straightforward to have just kind of an after this year. It's gone or you can replace it, and it seems more, it's easier to explain to someone who's opting into this maintenance policy. But we did talk about doing three categories or two, and we just kept it simple for this conversation. But I think there's definitely opportunity to break it up a little more, maybe it's five, ten and fifteen. So we can bring back maybe more detailed kind of chart with more.
Items. This is a really terrific thing to do, and I think you're getting at, you know, I think you're going to kind of resolve some of the issues you're getting at through it. But at the same time, it seemed some of the ways it's divided up seems a little unfair if we're not going to do depreciation.
Yes, some of those timeframes just need to be shorter.
Okay.
Man, honestly, I don't think anything should be out twelve years. You know, if you're going to do artwork on your home and then sell it, you know, painted paint should be three years. You know, siding fence, five years, everything else, you know, at most, seven years. Twelve years is a long time. I mean, I get it.
Though lasts like twenty years.
Well, okay, so a roof and a mechanical system, maybe.
Yeah.
But you know, windows. You know, like you said, Kelly, some of these things you're buying, buying and paying for them twice then, when you buy a new home, and that's not that's not doing us any good. So I think should maybe even if there's five or six categories, you know, they're still for set items. It's pretty easy to follow these things. You bring in the receipt from the painter. You know, somebody will know when they go to the house. If you did not paint it two years ago, they'll know that you did not paint it two years ago.
Yeah.
I think it just needs to be more complex, but.
We can definitely do that. That's really good feedback.
Uh, what else, gang? Erin?
I think, thank you for this. I'm really excited for this. I think this is something that are that our neighborhoods need. I do have concern about the rise of the of the housing cost and that it will continue to go up. I'm concerned with that, and if if the houses continue to serve the people we want it to serve. I'm also concerned with the income caps as we increase the price of the house more than the AMIs are increasing. That creates a smaller and smaller window, so we might want to take a look at that, too. But overall, I really like this. I don't know if there are other ways that we can keep the prices down. I'd be, I think it's something that we need to take a look at to see how many people are signing up and that sort of thing. And and again, if if it's the family that we want to serve, that that families can still afford it, or if it's you know, whatever, whatever groups we're trying to serve, I just think that we need to keep an eye on it and definitely those income caps.
That's a really good point to look into. I will look, look at that as well.
Carol?
But thanks for this, Nicole, and thank you for including the example at the end. That really helped to see how that would work. I'm absolutely supportive of incentivizing people to do maintenance to protect their stock of affordable housing. I agree with what Kelly brought up, the lack of depreciation or just changing the timetable on items. I think a tweet to that would be great.
Great.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Nicole, I like the the whole concept, but the years definitely need to be adjusted. Eric's spot on on that.
Jeffrey?
Yeah, I agree with what Dennis just said, referring to Eric's suggestion. This is, this is incredibly complicated, a lot of moving parts. I appreciate the effort, and I think we can come up with something, but I I think what we have right here is, yeah, I think we need to tighten it up, especially the year wise, years.
Dennis, uh, Dick?
Yeah, I agree with everything everybody said. You know, we probably need maybe four different categories, you know.
Yeah.
For the different depreciations and yeah, I just have to really give staff credit, you know, from the housing committee perspective, they've worked really hard to protect the the price creep. I I hear what you're saying, Erin, because you're so right. I mean, if we have price creep every year, we're losing the people we were trying to serve. So I know Lori and Nicole are super protective of price creep, so they're trying.
All right. By the way, that was not my idea. That was Kelly's idea, so.
Our ideas.
Give him credit to Kelly then.
Yeah, um, looks great. And anybody have anything else? All right, let's go to our favorite subject, COVID.
COVID. All right. Start off with transit. So our plan from the town is to start our winter schedule on December fifth. That winter schedule, and we need thirty-four drivers in order to do the winter schedule. We currently, we only have twenty-six. So we're eight drivers short, and we're still recruiting, but it's not looking super promising right now. It's a, it's a tough field for people to be in right now. I mean, you're driving around for an extended period of time, wearing a mask, having to constantly you know, confront people getting on and and while they're on the bus about wearing their mask and doing things and and, you know, it it's diff, it's difficult. And so we've lost people that just don't want to do it anymore. You know, housing is an issue. It's not the issue I would say right now that's keeping us from getting people, but it certainly well, it is an incentive to help us attract more people as we're doing it. So I, you know, we're going to continue to forge ahead. That's not going to help us in the immediate immediate term, but we still have some housing we can offer. You know, James is going to put together kind of a bonus. Kind of a hiring and then into bonus that you get when you hire on, and then if you stay, you get the other half, kind of an end of season bonus program that we're going to look at that in the long run, probably would save us money from having you know, continue to have turnover and our recruiting efforts with people. So we're looking at that as a way, but we'll we'll need to probably at the very latest by your next meeting make a decision whether we end up having to start the winter season with reduced transit routes. So which, you know, well, the first thing to go is the trolley. And then it may be some reduced, you know, I'll let James address that when when the time comes, but they have a plan for how we start to hit those reduced routes based on personnel. Any questions on that before I go to part two of transit, Nick?
Hey. Hey, Rick, is it? Is it too hard that I I mean, I know we have slightly different schedules for weekends than weekdays, but I mean, would it be too hard to to go with dramatically different schedules, weekends and weekdays for the first few weeks of December? Kind of ease into it? I know it's inconsistent, not ideal, but is that is that a solution to?
Yeah, I mean, maybe. Jen, you want to weigh in, come offline on this? Is it something we've looked at modifying schedules during peak periods more and with people? Is that is that a possibility we could look at?
You know, as far as having a plus-up service on the weekend and something different on the weekday. I think, you know, our initial concern is that it might just be confusing to the public. You know, trying to communicate that out. It's not to say that we certainly can't look at it for this winter and see if we have any options. But usually would do like a full marketing and communication effort, probably months in advance to let people know that was happening.
I'm not suggesting we do this permanently. I'm suggesting we do it for the first three weeks of December, just to kind of get through until we get fully hired. It's it's not ideal. I totally agree. We want to be consistent. It's just, you know, kind of thinking out of the box.
Where where a plus-up might be advantageous for us during peak periods would be more on the yellow, throw in an extra bus on the yellow to get move people, you know, from from the north down into town along Airport Road. And that is not something that necessarily maybe has to be communicated because those people are going to be waiting for the next bus to show up. You know, when we're probably not going to be able to to meet the demand. And so that that's probably where that could be advantageous for us.
Our big problem really is not going to be the internal routes. It's going to be getting people from the airport property to the gondola.
Yeah.
And I, you know, part of this is the skieria has to beef it up too, but I think in the end, I think we could run more limited service in town, not do the trolley. That I mean, we we talked about when we started, you know, before COVID, when we talked about building a structure, one of the things we talked about was having a robust plan to get people from the airport in, and with twelve people per bus, that's going to be hard. That's going to mean more buses and more drivers, and that's that will be more important than almost anything else, so.
All right, just wanted you to have a heads up, but we'll keep you up to.
I'd say mothball the trolley right now. I wouldn't even worry about that one.
Have we heard about Vale Resorts struggling for bus rider, bus drivers, too?
We just met with them, and I don't recall them discussing that as an issue. I think they're, and you know, they don't they don't hire the numbers that we do. We are looking at, you know, trying to cross-train if possible, some of our CDLs if they wanted to pick up an extra shift or some some overtime, but there's quite a bit to driving one of those buses. So you know, we we can't be too we need to be careful about that. Speaking of being careful, we feel that we need to shut down the transit center. We're as it's a scary start, we have lots, we don't have any ability to control the inside of that, and we're finding more people congregating as the weather is getting colder inside that hallway. We've already shut down what we call the grand room, but we're having people congregate in the hallways of the restroom leading in. And so I think we need to shut it down and we need to use porta potties over the over the course of the winter out there, so.
Have we have we kind of abbreviated our night schedule because due to the curfews and all that stuff?
Good question. Jen? You're muted.
Thanks, Rick. We stop at ten fifteen, so we we're going to stay with that for winter, too. So it's slightly different than what we normally run.
How late can you drink now? Is it ten, ten o'clock? Is that the last call?
Me, me personally, Jeffrey, or?
Well, just no, no, in a, in a public place.
You got it. Nine thirty, you're done. Nine thirty, you're you're actually shut. People off the street. You got it. Nine thirty, you're done. Nine thirty, you're, you're actually shut. People off the street by ten.
Yeah.
So I guess ten fifteen is a reasonable time to.
For employees, I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, okay.
And Jane, James texted me that both the ski resort and the summer stage are struggling with hiring drivers right now. So.
I definitely think you're on the right track, Rick, with incentives, anything you can do to hold employees. This is going to be a really tough year.
All right. I just, I wanted you all to have a heads up as we go into that. So, um, there's that part and then so we've had limited discussion on this. There's, Picken County is still pushing the state to try to implement travel restrictions for people coming into Colorado. It's been, uh, it's been discussed and cast a little bit. It was touched upon at our mayor managers and commissioners meeting a little bit there. Um, it just doesn't seem to be, um, we, we're not going to get consensus from cast to support this because there, uh, too many varying positions on this. And, and there certainly doesn't appear to be a real, um, desire within some county to push for this. And we want to make sure that, that you all are kind of on the same page with that way of thinking. Uh, or is this something that you feel that we should be looking at stronger?
How do you guys feel?
What would it look like? Like what do you, what kind of travel restrictions? How would we do this?
Uh, I mean, you know, so New Mexico has them in different places. Go ahead, Eric.
I think you'd have to have a clean test within seventy-two hours of traveling. New Mexico right now, or at least it was a little while ago, when you got, if you traveled outside of New Mexico, you had to quarantine fourteen days when you got home. It's why my brother's not coming up for Thanksgiving because he can't afford to quarantine and miss work. So there's multiple options, but I think the seventy-two hour test is a fairly standard one in some states right now.
Enforce it.
Well, if you come in, it's tough unless you're, if you're flying in, I think they have an idea. Uh, I know Shannon was Connecticut's doing something or had something she could, was gonna, was looking at traveling back there, but how do they do it at the airport, Shannon? Is that right?
Uh, so when you fly into Bradley, you can either have a test done in the airport and pay for it, or you can go somewhere else and have it, but you have to report your test results back to the state within, I think it's seventy-two hours. But it's a small, much smaller airport.
It, it probably different mechanisms, but that's also probably why there's not, there's not a big push behind this to see this at the state level, something like this happening here because of the number, sheer numbers. And on one hand, you could say that's why we need it because of the sheer numbers of people, but, um, you know.
I also wonder, is that really the problem? I mean, we had huge sheer numbers all summer. And, you know, this outbreak has come during our, as things have started to quiet down, you know, our numbers have exploded. I and yeah, I think a lot of our problem is, is our workforce, you know, it's the twenty-one to twenty-nine is what the data says with thirty-one to thirty-nine being second highest group. So, um, you know, it's college kids within state. It's, you know, it, I, I just think that's going to be really hard to, um, enforce, you know, the, the mechanics of it are going to be very difficult. I think we're better off focusing on, um, our local community and, and trying to address this personally.
I listened to a bit of the county call today and Thomas was saying the same thing. The idea of enforcement, um, is really challenging. And I would, I would agree. I mean, I, I almost want to see what the roadmap to that would be. You, you know, like I'm, I'm all for testing and, and tracing and, and all that. I think, I think that's a wise, smart thing to do. I just, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to conceptualize all this type of tracking. Um, I, it definitely needs to be a, a state initiative and, and needs, you know, we, we would need support. And I don't, I don't even know if we have the resources right now, um, to, to handle it.
Look, we can't, we can't even enforce the STR thing to the level we would like to. I don't even know how you layer this one on. I mean, hell, we can't, we have trouble enforcing, enforcing masks on Main Street, honestly. So now we're going to add another layer. As much as I would like to, I, I think this is just, it's just too much.
I'd like to keep it as the last tool in the toolbox, but enforcement, I don't see how you do it.
I agree. All right. Thank you. Next thing, have you all seen the, uh, the COVID notification app that the state has put out? We think that's a good tool and there's probably more we could do to help, uh, push that out to, you know, people in the community. And so I think we'd like to do that. Um, look for ways to encourage more people to sign up for that and, and do it. I, I can't really see the downside to us trying to push that out, but just wanted to run it by all of you.
First. It's great.
Okay. Um, I think we're at a spot where I need to do, uh, a town manager order. I haven't done one for a while. You know, uh, this issue around, as we're getting closer to winter and people are, um, you know, looking at how they're going to deal with, uh, people congregating outside, waiting for a table, et cetera. They're, they're looking at, at fire pits and propane type, uh, fire pits. And our current code, any type of a gas fired pit, natural or propane fired is one negative point as part of the permit process, as part of the new sustainability code. Um, so they have to offset that. And it's, you know, it's not, it's not e, an easy process to offset that one point, but certainly it's a worthwhile process for something that would be considered a permanent outdoor, uh, gas fire pit. Uh, but we, we feel that there should be a mechanism in place to, uh, forego that negative point for what we would call temporary portable uh, gas fire pits that are used only during this time of COVID. And we have to make it very clear to people that they, and we're calling it temporary and portable so that, I mean, you can go out all day, right? And you can buy these things that people have on their back patio for five hundred bucks. This stores the twenty-pound propane tank underneath it. It's not much more than a coffee table type thing. Um, and it provides, you know, a little warmth for two or three people, uh, huddling around it, which is really all you should have. And those is not a big investment. What we don't want is people making a large financial investment. And then they're going to, you know, be upset that they can't use it, or they have to negate that negative point. And we red tag it until they do it, uh, after COVID. And so, uh, you know, we want to make sure that we clearly identify it as a temporary portable type thing. But I would need to do a temporary order to allow that to happen. In addition to that, our current code requires whenever you ha, increase seating under our new employee mitigation, it counts outdoor seating as employee mitigation. Uh, so if you have new outdoor seating that you would propose, if you added a new patio to one of your restaurants and it had, you know, twenty more seats that you could be responsible under the code for, uh, having to offset an employee generation based on that square footage that you've added to that. Twenty-four A is that new policy that you all approved not that long ago. So we need to also exempt that during the time of COVID for the new seating that's being added outside.
And for losing seating inside, it makes sense.
Yeah, of course. So.
Good solution, Rick, and I think we should have you do the order as soon as possible.
Well, I will. And I just always like, I mean, I always want to give you guys a heads up that these orders will go out. So we'll, you know, we'll draft the order and put something out in the next day or two. Sign in, okay?
Um, Rick, I have a question with that. Um, so this is for additional outdoor seating. It's not for adding fire pits or areas where people aren't sitting down and eating for them just to wait?
It's two, it's two different items, Carol.
Okay.
Yeah. There are people that are adding outdoor seating, uh, regardless of a fire pit. And they, uh, we, we probably should have done it this summer. Obviously we added more outdoor seating and we didn't do that. But, um, the, they're adding outdoor seating and they need to be exempted from that. And then the fire pit, regardless of whether they're eating or not, is just, if a business adds an outdoor fire pit under the new sustainability code, it, it's a negative point.
The fire pit though? I mean, we just had the conversation about the snow sculptures could promote congregating. I mean, a fire pit's gonna congregate gathering.
They're pretty small though.
But so one thing that public health has been telling some of the restaurants I've heard is that any additional space they add, people have to be seated, butts in seats. And that's so that people aren't just congregating around and huddling, you know, closer and closer to each other. So we might want to get a little bit of clarity on that before we say, yeah, it's fine. Have a space where people can just stand up and move in and out however they want to.
Um, all right. I mean, you know, it just got.
So this came from rest, the restaurant call that I have, Dick and I have every Monday. Some of the restaurants have tried to add this because you cannot let people congregate inside now. So people are just standing outside in the cold and these fire pits are so small, you can't put more than a couple of people around them. So while I agree, we probably do need to talk to public health. I don't, this is not the same as going to visit a snow sculpture. They're really pretty small. Um, you know, a couple of these places just want to have them so they can have their customers just wait outside the door since they're not allowed to have them inside. So that's, that's where it came from.
I, I don't, I, I don't see this as, I see this apples to oranges to like a snow sculpture type thing. And, and there again, I, I think if we encourage best practices is the people that, you know, the, the restaurants have, you know, kind of a, a monitoring system to encourage the, the good behavior. I don't, I, 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 I'm not as worried about this. And I, there again, I just think we're going to make it easy to do businesses this winter for restaurants. I think we're going to lose some if we don't and, uh, we're going to lose some whatever we do. So, uh, I'm, I'm okay taking the chance on this in, in, you know, kind of asking them to, uh, to re, require a best practice type thing around these fire pits.
So are those tall patio heaters, are those allowed under the code or are those a negative point also? Do we know?
I don't think we go after patio heaters.
I mean, they, they're on every deck out there packed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rick, tho, those are exempt. They're not subject to that because, you know, they move those things around. They take them in and out.
Yeah. I don't see, I don't see these portable fire pits being a whole lot different. I guess my point is than the, one of those patio heaters, you're not going to get a lot of people around it.
But the patio heaters are on an area where people are sitting down at tables. And these are where people can like crowd in, you know, unrelated parties, however.
The same way that Carol does, we're going to have seven people around the fire pit shoulder to shoulder. That's not what we're encouraging here.
Will they be spread out? I mean, are, is there some kind of, um, responsibility to the restaurant to say, you know, one party per heater? Or we're just talking about one heater per restaurant, you know, because depending on how many people are waiting in line, if there's one heater, everybody waiting in line, they're going to go around the same heater, whether it's big or small.
Well, here, here's the truth about those heaters. If you're not standing right next to it, you get no heat. So you cannot get that many people around these things. They're just not that big. And, you know, maybe we put a size cap on them. I mean, you know, you could go to Breck Iron Works and get one of those big ones like we had out in, on the Blue River Plaza, um, for some of our events. Maybe we just, you know, let, let Truckee find a, whatever that small size is and say, these are the ones that are exempt. You really cannot get more than a family around them.
But typically they come in sizes, you know, that they're not, that like, you know, the actual diameter of the pit or something. I think the guy from Breck Iron Works is going to be talking to you tonight or making some comment, uh, during council meeting.
About this?
During the meeting. Well, yeah, I think that that and upset maybe that, that, that there's a negative point for for these types of things, but.
But they will need to be spread out too, right?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that anybody's thinking about getting, doing, putting out more than one.
Yeah, I haven't heard. I think Mark, do we, how many people have even talked about it? Do we know?
No, really just talking to Jason from, uh, Breck Iron Works. And then we did just deal with one, actually with the planning commission last week out of the distillery.
Yeah. I don't know. We've, we've got eight applications right now for outdoor structures. Tent or that includes a tent or your type thing. So eight is not a lot when we have, you know, with the number of restaurants we have. Um, so people are limited.
I don't see a lot of these fire pits coming in. I, there, there may be, you know, a half dozen or so, but I just, not, not, not many people have the kind of space to do that, honestly.
Are they a value add for the customer?
I, you don't have to walk back to your condo, I guess.
Yeah.
I mean.
I don't know where they're going to put it on a, I mean, we wouldn't allow it on a town owned, uh, it wouldn't be on, you know, public right of way. So, um.
The guy that brought it up was from Main Street Station. They have a little more stick around room there.
Yeah.
I mean, most restaurants, honestly, most restaurants don't have any room there. You know, all the zero lot line stuff, you know, in a lot of the core, you can't, there's no, there's no place to put these things. It's a handful.
So what I'm hearing for you, from you is that we could do that, we would do the order with the ability for it not as long as it met. And, and then I think that come dev, there's still be a permit process that has to go through. And then the, they look at it, uh, kind of with that, that eye of making sure that it's not in an area that's going to, um, I mean, really it can't, it's to attract a lot of people around it or to, you know, to do that. So.
Yeah. Honestly, Rick, I think we put the burden of public health compliance on the business owner. I, I don't know that that's come dev's job. You know, I think we, I don't know if you put that in your order or not, that, that, you know, this does not relieve you of your responsibility to follow all public health orders.
That's a good point, Nick. Thank you.
I mean, that's what we do.
Just kind of put the burden on them because it's a risk. I mean, if you buy one of these and then all of a sudden public health changes their order, it's, it's not our fault, you know? I mean, that's, that's on you. But we are, we are talking about getting rid of the one point penalty, uh, in, you know, in, in the short term, as long as this.
Just to.
Yes, okay. And I, I would just suggest we make that very clear when, when we, when we do this thing.
Who's, who's in favor of Rick doing this?
I'm fine as long as it meets public health guideline.
Okay. Are you going to vote, Ruby?
Why isn't she in bed?
Like six of, it's six forty-five, Jeffrey.
She's got a cool mom. That's why, Jeffrey.
My, my parents put me to get bed at four P M.
All right. So it'll be that one and the, uh, employee deal, uh, employee generation thing. So, um, that's all I have under COVID right now. I did get a confirmation from Dan Hendershot that there are no, um, there are no occupancy restrictions for city market. Which was concerning to me. Um, but because this is considered an essential service, um, basically, they have to provide an environment that promotes physical distancing for staff and customers. Really? And so uh, because there are no capacity limits in critical businesses, it's tough to enforce that one. So.
I was just talking to Kelly about this, but I don't know if you've all been to City Market lately, but they have shrunk the width of their aisles. So you cannot pass somebody, you cannot allow any space between you and somebody else if you have to pass somebody. To find in the opposite direction with social distancing.
It's terrible. I don't.
We want to consider past ordinance to set capacity?
Well, we can always be stricter. We can always be stricter if we want and we can require.
I mean,
them to see something.
It seems kind of crazy to me. I mean, we know how that place gets at four o'clock in the afternoon during ski season. That's a disaster.
It would be really nice if there was a way to tell people that not more than one person from your group can come in or two people maximum or something like that. Because that's really the burden. It's not necessarily one person per cart that's an issue. It's the four people per cart that really makes it like you can't move in there.
Everybody picking out their own cereal.
Yeah.
Vacation.
They have to take a vote that they want honey nut Cheerios. Well, I'd, I'd look in, I wouldn't mind looking into that. I'd, I'd like to talk to uh, Coroga folks too, of that.
I mean, it feels like every other type of business has some kind of limitation on it right now. I mean, aside from like maybe the hospital and, and things like that, but, but for places where, I, I just, I think some.
There are still grocery stores. I mean, you try to go to Trader Joe's or Whole Foods, they're still counting people. And uh, I think they're doing the right thing and being responsible and there's nothing occurring uh, here, so.
Some additional parking spaces nearby, so they could even be busier than they've been before.
Maybe that's the answer is we talk to them and uh, let them know that we would strongly encourage they do it or we may feel compelled to.
Uh, I certainly will have that conversation and see where they're at and tell them we're considering it and what, and this to pick their brain a little bit on what they would be willing to do or what they think they could live with, uh, because typically the guideline. So um, what, what uh, public health would tell them if they were looking for a guideline for what is considered an environment that promotes physical distancing, it's that one hundred square foot per person rule. So you know, you would take the number of square feet in that building and you would subtract out what, you know, for shelving and different things like that. And then you would come up with a number that you think, and then, you know, that we divided by a hundred and that's the number of people that you think you should have in there. And that includes employees working too, so um.
I, I think Rick should talk to them, tell them that we're planning on doing something, we'd rather them do it themselves. And if they won't, if we have to get together next Tuesday for a quick meeting to pass something, I think we should. We're gonna go into Thanksgiving and there'll be six people around each cart, trying to figure out what they're gonna do for dinner. And then locals are going in one at a time like they should, and that's not fair to the local community, to put them in that predicament, so.
I, I, I think that actually, that's the point, we could make a big difference if we one or two per group limited, like another, there's not a whole, not a whole family shopping together. I think that would make a huge difference.
It would.
So if we can ask them and Breck Market to do that, that'd be awesome.
Certainly be nice to see that signage outside the, the grocery stores.
Listen, the rest of us have to do all this stuff. They're a huge company. They should be able to do this very easy.
All right, uh, any other COVID stuff? If not, we'll, we only have five minutes, so do you want to do a quick break?
Yeah, let's take a quick break, everybody. If you need to stretch your legs. All this meeting to order. Um, before we do roll call, anybody out there that's going to make a public comment uh, during citizens comments? That's coming up soon. Use the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen and start typing it out now. I will then read it out loud. And that's how we do it during Zoom. Roll call.
Ms. Sade. Here. Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Ms. Jello.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, I am here. Uh, approval of minutes for October twenty-seventh and November third, are there any comments, corrections, additions, deletions, anything? Nope, all right. Minutes for October twenty-seventh and November third stand as approved. Uh, agenda, any uh, no changes? Okay, uh, citizens comments, um.
We do have, we do have a gentleman from Breck Iron Works that I know wanted to make a comment.
Yeah.
And I could have Chris bring him over for a three minute comment if you want, and Shannon. Shannon also has a comment that was sent to us electronically that she'll read into record after that.
Great.
So Chris, could you bring uh, Jason, I just saw his name, it was up here, what happened to it? Kozak K O S C Z A K, you see Jay?
He's coming over right now.
Thank you.
I know that guy.
Jason, I, can you hear us?
Yeah, I sure can. Thank you for having me.
How are you, man?
Hey, very good. Hey, Jason. Everybody, uh.
Jason, you are frozen right now. There you go. Want to start over?
Sure, yep. Uh, I'm Jason Kozak of Breck Iron Works, homeowner to Breckenridge here for the past twenty years. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of my client, The Poor House, located at two oh six North Main Street, uh, to request a motion to be made this evening to adopt a temporary and immediate exemption ordinance number twenty-four adopted as of July of this year to policy thirty-three R. In light of the current COVID restrictions placed on restaurants to operate at twenty-five percent occupancy and working towards better business interests to accommodate our guests with outdoor dining and expected social distancing requirements, the existing code language needs to be temporarily amended as well as we all work to find suitable and sustainable considerations. I've invested a lot of time in discussion with representatives from local energy auditing companies and other town officials uh, who have agreed that based on immediate challenges and operating restrictions, I'm petitioning this council to amend ordinance number twenty-four, the policy thirty-three R is necessary and to allow for the use of temporary fire features. Uh, I heard your discussion earlier and it sounds like that stage is being set. Um, specifically, The Poor House is making an investment on a product uh, we have in my current production queue uh, for custom movable fire feature. And if necessary, they're willing to eliminate three of their existing patio heaters, and we all know what those look like. And uh, that to my understanding um, uh, of the existing code language has no current restrictions. And they're, they're rather unsightly, in my opinion. Uh, and replacing those heaters with one custom Breck Iron Works steel log fire feature. In doing so, the carbon footprint uh, currently created would be reduced by three to one and would significantly benefit both the unwanted carbon emission into our community and add to the greater curb appeal and drive better business and positive revenue through the doors of an already taxed and struggling Main Street restaurant. I, I hope that my elected members of this council will see fit to approve my request and agree to a temporary exemption this evening. I look forward to your favorable response and thank you very much.
Thanks, Jason. Jason, is this uh, for people that are seated or people that are waiting?
That really isn't up to me to determine or uh, recommend, it's.
Do you, do you know?
It's essentially designed to pull people off the sidewalk uh, to where both neighboring restaurants are currently thriving. Um, and I think we all know that there's some sort of a black cloud above that particular business. And uh, it certainly would heighten their curb appeal uh, to drive better business uh, to their bottom line and uh, just trying to give a local business a leg up. And I understand that the use of this fire feature in their investment, be it large or small, we don't sell cheap fire pits, guys, and I think you know that. We've been in business here in Breckenridge for twenty years. Uh, and there's a lot of livelihoods that are affected by the product that we furnish to our discerning clientele. So whether they sit or stand really isn't a concern to me and what they do with it. Once the restrictions, these COVID restrictions are then lifted, also isn't as much of a concern if they elect to sell it and this negative point system that, that's currently in play based on how the code reads um, that then gets enforced, um, that too uh, is completely understandable. In hopes that that answered your question, Eric. I don't know if they're gonna sit or stand.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
Yeah, you bet.
Hey, Jason, could you tell me the dimensions of the unit that they're uh, they're considering buying?
Yes, it's a thirty inch round.
Okay.
And I had a, a chaplain from the planning department on my patio in my home in the Wellington this afternoon and, you know, he just gave a nod to it and sees that it's something that would be passable. The fact that these ugly uh, patio heaters have, have no code language, we're gonna see them littered throughout the town and, and, and to these available spaces of restaurants to me, I don't think is uh, is, is, is necessarily the answer either. Uh, it's nice to have something that, you know, fits the, the decor and the motif of our, of our town and community. Um, and I obviously have a business interest in this as well.
Thanks, Jason. Any other questions?
Eric, I may give Jason a call in the morning. I'd like to be curious to see if we want to put some dimensions in our, in, in the town manager order and maybe even some maximum B T U because we don't, what we don't want to do is encourage some raging fire pit that would have, you know, a dozen people huddled around it.
Correct, and there is a discretion in the end use of the uh, of the owner. And that's something that I walk through on every application. Uh, the B T U rating of these portable patio heaters is fifty thousand. So you think of the number of these that uh, well, currently uh, The Poor House has three of them and they're looking to eliminate all three. So that's a hundred and fifty thousand B T Us, Rick. And uh, the fire feature that uh, we're furnishing for this particular project has an output and uh, operated use of eighty to ninety thousand B T Us. So there's, there's a significant difference there. Um, it is much more environmentally appropriate.
Okay, well, Jason, expect a call from Rick tomorrow so he can talk through some of this stuff a little bit with you.
Yeah, Rick, I left you a voicemail with your assistant earlier today too, so feel free to reach me at any time.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks, Jason. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jason.
All right, we also have a uh, another one, Shannon. Do you have something you were gonna read into the record?
Uh, Dr. Lackey would like to speak as well, so Chris will bring him over.
Okay, thanks a lot, Jason.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Uh, Dr. Lackey, whenever you're ready, if you wanna unmute or I don't know if you're gonna be on camera or just talk, so it's up to you.
And Chris, you can get Jason off also.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to, I, I sent a message earlier to uh, to you, uh, Mayor Mamula, but I, I just wanted to briefly say that uh, um, my name's Chuck Lackey. I'm a physician at the Summit Community Care Clinic uh, in Frisco, and I've lived here for, since nineteen seventy-seven. I'm, I'm a board member of Staying in Summit, which is why I'm contacting you uh, today. I just want to let you know we're a local nonprofit organization uh, whose mission is to establish senior housing services here in the county, uh, including independent living, assisted living and memory care. Um, we're losing long-term valued residents who would rather live out their lives here but must leave their home and lifelong friends due to inability to care for themselves as they get older. Uh, we've done some significant work toward our goal, including a very recent preliminary market demand report showing the size and shape of the need. Uh, we've issued an R F P to seven interested developers. Uh, we've narrowed the field to two well-qualified potential partners and we're working actively with the county to locate a building site. And I'm just here simply tonight to inform the council of where we are. We're all trying to reach out to the various town councils uh, and, and let you know what we're doing, uh, where we are and answer any potential questions that you have.
Thanks, doctor. Uh, questions? Anybody? All right, um, Dr. Lackey, if you can just say, I don't know if you've already sent some information that we can read over, but it'd be great if you could um, email some, some stuff to the group so we can have a look at it.
I did email, email you b- briefly my statement and uh, we meet every third Tuesday of, of the month. We'll meet next Tuesday. And I'll just let the board know that uh, I, I've let you guys know where we are and if there's anything specific that they would like to further send out to you, you know, it's a work in progress. Uh, we've been uh, at this for a couple of years. I've been a member uh, for the last year and we're just getting closer to uh, looking at some people to help us uh, uh, develop the project. We're looking at architects, uh, and we're working with the county to try and secure a piece of land and that's kind of where we are right now.
That's great. Well, thank you so much for uh, speaking to us tonight.
Thank you for your time.
All right, uh, anyone else uh, in the chat? Doesn't look like it, so. Oops, I lost my place, sorry. Uh, we will close communications to council. We have a B T O office update today. Is it Lucy or Brett or Hessa or Lucy? We got the number one dog. Yeah, eighteen.
Good, good evening, um, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, I'm gonna adjust um, some of my comments this evening uh, to uh, just touch on a few of the things that you all have been talking about this afternoon. But um, what I want to start with is lodging and, and the, the one point that I'll always keep reinforcing is uh, we are always mindful at the B T O of crowding versus lodging. You know, so people on the street isn't, doesn't necessarily equate to people that are housed in our lodges and we stay focused on the lodges. Um, we just got the October thirty-first D M X report and what's important with this one is um, we had a couple of properties, big properties, adjust their reports and, and correct their reports and we have fifty percent of the units in this report, which is the most we've ever had. So it's another way of saying it's probably the most accurate report we've seen from D M X. Um, we finished the summer within one percent of two thousand nineteen. We're down like point six of one percent and really all of that came in July, August, September and um, October. A D R was only down three percent. So that means we really backloaded the summer, so that's why it felt so busy. Um, but for um, Brian's projections for summer, uh, lodging at least is within one percent. Tomorrow, um, Bill Woschowski is gonna do an update of what we got in the business survey. And I can tell you that just from the people who responded to that in terms of forecasting, I'm estimating what kind of business they did over the summer and forecasting forward six months is pretty comparable to what we're seeing in the lodging report. So um, favorable, all things considered. October, um, we are gonna be up in room nights forty-six percent. It's a big percent, but it's on a very small base. So twenty-four thousand room nights instead of sixteen and A D R and Rev Power up. So we're gonna have a good October. So again, for the forecast, that's gonna be important for um, Brian to know. October and December are both looking favorable right now and January is down, which is not surprising. We know the booking window is much closer in. We know the booking window is much closer in. So these numbers will keep moving quite a lot. We have for the winter overall now, we're just under 5% ahead of where we were this time last year. And we have about 45% of business on the books for the winter. So any quick questions on just the lodging? I mean, it's it's good. It's decent.
Lucy, can I can I ask, are these? How are they booking out and not knowing what the restrictions will be? And how will they handle that?
I think the lodges where people are tending to book is going to be where the properties have fairly flexible cancellation policies. Because everybody's on the wire of like, okay, I'm going to plan, but I also am going to plan to change my plans at the last minute.
Okay.
Like we will with events and all those kind of things. So that's kind of how that's working. I did look up based on what you were talking about. Well, let me go to events next, and then I'll go to marketing and the quarantine question. So events, I will, I just want to remind everyone that we are looking at what we're doing with these reimagined Uller and snow sculpture are not events to draw people. We're not building these things as a draw, although we know especially with snow sculpture, people are going to come looking for these things, whether we have anything or not. But it's really intended to be animation for people that we expect will be here anyway. So that's why it's dispersed around town. And we do have a plan for, you know, managing the crowds around those things. And we'll discuss that more tomorrow. But I just want to counsel, just to be clear, we're just like October Feast was not an event. It was like a placeholder, just something for people that were going to be here anyway. These other events are being planned with that same idea. And we are fully prepared to change plans at the ninth hour. Everybody understands that contracts are being written that way. The last thing we want to do is do anything that's going to exacerbate any issues we're going to have with, you know, health related. So and we'll dive into that deeper tomorrow in the resiliency meeting. For marketing, we typically don't do much in winter. You know, we the resort and BGB and a number of parties lead that and we're just support what all we're doing now is pretty much what we did last April when everything was shut down. We are only in the OTA channels. So Travelocity, Expedia, those kind of folks where they're looking for us anyway. And we are only out there with safety and responsible tourism messages. So that's that's all we're doing at this point. We are concerned currently, or what I could find today, there are 13 states that have quarantines relative to Colorado. So meaning somebody from, you know, New Jersey comes to Colorado. When they go back to New Jersey, they're expected to quarantine or show a negative COVID test within 72 hours. So there's 13 states like that right now. It's changing every day. So in a lot of these states, we're considered like a hot zone, and that's why Colorado is on their list. Some states have it for everybody traveling out of state. So anyway, so that is a concern. Obviously, we're not marketing in those states. But that as that grows, the impacts to our business over the winter is is obviously going to be greater. And again, as long as the properties are able to have pretty flexible cancellation policies, probably get the bookings, we may lose the bookings if people can't come. So that's how we're handling that. We're also seeing impacts from these quarantines in the media. And Austin can identify a couple of stories that we were set to go. One was going to go in Chicago. Because now we are what Colorado is one of the states that's that's got this quarantine thing with Illinois. That article was pulled. So we're seeing it happen there. So back to the question that you all were discussing earlier, it seems like that really needs to be a state. If if we're going to do something like that, it really needs to be a statewide decision. And we're already seeing some impacts from other states kind of doing unto us. So so that's what's out there in the in the market. So happy to answer questions. I imagine we're going to spend a lot of time talking about this stuff tomorrow in resiliency. I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight.
All right, any questions for Lucy?
Is it safe to say so with those 13 states that require quarantine after visiting Colorado? I would imagine that's a pretty big deterrent. So as our lodging is looking up throughout the winter, is it safe to say that that lodging is likely from states that have a not so good COVID rate? Or how how does that how does that work out?
The way some of these states are doing it, they're saying that if you travel, like Connecticut as an example, if you're from you're a Connecticut resident, and if you travel to a state that has a higher COVID rate than Connecticut has, and then when you come back, then you have to test negative or quarantine. So that's how some of them are handling it. And like I said, this is fluid. It's changing all the time, Aaron.
I just wonder and worry that we're we're having more visitors who are not expected to wear masks that they're in their home home state hometown.
And well, but I I think the education is out there, like it doesn't matter that they don't have to do it at home. When they're here, they do.
Okay.
You know, between the tourism office and everything, every destination management company is doing, it's 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 mandatory here. So it doesn't matter what they do at home.
That's a good question, though, Aaron. I was thinking the same thing. We just want the people from the trouble states.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most of the states that have that this quarantine that includes Colorado, the ones that are the three that are most important in terms of our normal markets, Illinois is a big one, you know, Chicago is a big one. And then New Jersey and Pennsylvania, New York, I would throw in there. So we're on a quarantine list for all those states.
All right. The questions for Lucy? All right, Lucy, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, we go to continued business. We have some second readings. The first is second reading Council Bill number 36, series 2020. This is an ordinance repealing and re adopting with changes, chapter 14 of Title IV of the Breckenridge Town Code concerning regulated marijuana businesses. Tim?
This ordinance, if adopted tonight, will amend the town's marijuana licensing ordinance to reflect certain changes that were made at the state level this year with respect to the terminology and the numbering of the state marijuana, both the retail marijuana and the medical marijuana codes. Within our own ordinance, we have references to state law. Those references have now changed because of what the legislature did to re codify some of the state laws. So this ordinance is really not substantive. It's not intended to change the rules. It's just intended to bring our ordinance up to date to reflect the most current state law. And there are no changes to this ordinance from first reading.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any questions for Tim from council? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? Please use the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen. You have 30 seconds starting now. It's very uncomfortable silence.
It is. We're all still think about the fact that we're getting all the bad states.
Right. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment. Is there a motion?
I move we pass Council Bill number 36 on second reading, the title which is 20, series 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chielo?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yeah.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. The next second reading is of Council Bill number 37, series 2020. It's an ordinance repealing and re adopting with changes, chapter 12 of the title five of Title V of the Breckenridge Town Code concerning the town of Breckenridge disposable bag fee. Tim?
This ordinance comes before the council on second reading tonight for really two different purposes, I think. The first is a is a legal change. The council may be aware that earlier in the year, the Colorado Supreme Court upheld a challenge to the City of Aspen's bag fee ordinance and ruled that their fee was not a tax under Tabor and therefore did not require voter approval. I have made certain modifications to our ordinance to kind of use the same terminology as the Colorado Supreme Court did in their analysis of the Aspen bag fee ordinance. More importantly, is are some substantive changes that Jesse Burley and and the planning staff have been working on. Most important, I think, is that on September 1, 2021, the plastic bags will be unlawful in the town. And at that time, all of the paper bags will have to contain 40% recycled content. Jesse, the council will recall Jesse's memo from the previous meeting analyzing and explaining other definitional issues and the like. I think staff is excited about this ordinance. We believe it will be an improvement. It will help regulate and and deal with the burdens of plastic bags. There's one change proposed to this ordinance from the form that was approved on first reading. And that has to do with the correction of a date toward the end of the ordinance. The other, the date at which plastic bags will become unlawful right now reads September 1, 2020. It obviously should be September 1, 2021. So if there is a motion made to adopt this ordinance on second reading, please refer to the form of the ordinance. Send the agenda packet.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? All right, anybody in the public wish to comment on this? This is a disposable bag fee, second reading, and also we will be outlawing plastic bags in town as of September 1, 2021. You have 30 seconds. I already started the clock. Use that Q and A function at the bottom if you want to say something about this. If you are a retailer, do not buy a ton of plastic bags for the next five years. Because next year, they're going to be outlawed. All right, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass Council Bill number 37, 2020, the title which is in the form that's in the packet.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? Thank you for this, everyone. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Ms. Chielo?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton? Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. All right, we have some first readings. The first is the Council Bill number 38, series 2020. This is an ordinance extending until May 26, 2021. Temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any application for a town of Breckenridge development permit and includes as part thereof an amenity club.
This ordinance comes on for first reading tonight. Council will recall that on May 26 of this year, because of concerns about the possible planning impacts of what have been referred to as amenity clubs, council adopted an ordinance placing a six month moratorium on the submission of any development permit application that would include as a part of the application, an amenity club. The purpose of the moratorium is to allow the staff and the council to analyze the impacts that these kind of businesses have and try to determine whether our regulations as currently written are sufficient or whether they need to be revised. The moratorium is scheduled to expire on November 26 of this month. This ordinance, if adopted, would extend the moratorium for another six months to carry it until May of 2021. This is necessary because the staff has continued to work on this issue, believes that it needs additional time. And then once the staff's analysis has been complete, we know we're going to have to have some additional time to discuss the matter with the council and let the council determine if the town's regulations need to be changed. So the the short answer is that that this ordinance, if adopted, will extend the moratorium for six months. I want to tell the council is our intent at the time of second reading to ask if this ordinance be made an emergency ordinance. So that at the after the public hearing on second reading has been concluded, the ordinance will become effective immediately. Otherwise, we're going to have a problem with this ordinance not going into effect prior to the expiration of moratorium.
Thank you, Tim. Questions for Tim? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading of this ordinance? Please do so with Q and A function at the bottom. You have 30 seconds. All right, public comment is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill number 38, 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? Roll call, please, Helen.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Chielo?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton? Mayor Mamula?
Yes, thank you. We have a first reading of Council Bill number 39, series 2020. This is an ordinance setting the mill levy within the town of Breckenridge for 2021. Brian?
Mr. Mayor and Council, each year we are required to set the mill levy in the town of Breckenridge by ordinance. This ordinance before you tonight will establish that mill levy at our usual level of 5.07 mills within the town of Breckenridge, which will yield about $3.5 million in revenue for the 2021 budget year.
Thank you, Brian. Questions? No, if anyone in the public wishes to comment on this, you have 30 seconds. Use the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen. All right, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass on first reading Council Bill number 39, series 2020, and the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carlton? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Chielo?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes, thank you. We have a first reading of Council Bill number 40, series 2020. This is an ordinance repealing and re adopting with changes, chapter one of Title VII, the Breckenridge Town Code, adopting by reference the Model Traffic Code for Colorado 2020 Edition, published by the Colorado Department of Transportation, amending the Model Traffic Code for Colorado 2020 Edition and providing penalties for the violation of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado 2020 Edition. Tim?
From time to time, the Colorado Department of Transportation publishes a book of traffic laws that can be adopted by local governments. So that the local government's traffic laws match so that the local government's traffic laws match up with the state's traffic laws and all critical elements. This ordinance, if adopted, would adopt by reference the 2020, which is the new Model Traffic Code put out by CDOT. It also includes some local amendments that the town has made before. These are essentially not rules of the road kind of ordinances. We have to be consistent as far as the rules of the road are with both the state and other municipalities. I think this is really just a sort of a periodic update, but we need to go ahead and do it, and it's my recommendation that this ordinance be adopted.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions?
It's kind of like a housekeeping method, isn't it?
Yes, Jeffrey, I think you could use that term.
I could.
That on their Jeffrey bingo card that he would say that tonight? That's like the free box.
Put it on his t-shirt.
Anyone in the public wish to comment on this one? I'm going to give you twenty seconds because this is not really exciting. Now I'll give you thirty seconds. If you're interested, Q and A function at the bottom of the screen.
I'm glad you corrected yourself because you know, they'd be held to pay if we cut up, oh yeah, lawsuit.
All right, that closes the public comment. Is there a motion?
We pass on first reading Council Bill number forty, series twenty twenty, the title which has been read into the record.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, roll call, please.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Right, we have first reading of Council Bill number forty one, series two thousand and twenty. This is an ordinance amending chapter seventeen of Title One of the Breckenridge Town Code concerning unclaimed property.
The town, the town has its own ordinance dealing with how we deal with lost and found property essentially that comes into our possession, either through the police department, the rec center, through the transit department. The state has its own statute dealing with unclaimed property. The the staff would greatly prefer to continue to follow our procedures as opposed to the state procedures because the state procedures are burdensome. At least that's what our staff thinks. This ordinance, if adopted, makes one amendment to our ordinance and that allows us to continue to use our local ordinance as opposed to being forced to comply with the state law. And that amendment requires that before we dispose of lost and found property, that we have to hold it for at least five years, which is the same period of time that the state has to hold it. Staff believes that this ordinance is preferable to having to comply with the the State Unclaimed Property Act and would recommend that it be adopted.
All right, any questions? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this? You have thirty seconds. Use a Q and A function at the bottom of your screen. All right, public comment is closed. Is there a motion?
Move we pass on first reading Council Bill number forty one, series twenty twenty, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? No, roll call.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have Council Bill number forty two, series two thousand and twenty. This is a first reading of an emergency ordinance approving a lease purchase agreement with PNC Equipment Finance LLC, lease number one one nine six six nine two dash one. Scott, welcome back.
Eric, what you have before you tonight is an emergency ordinance to approve the leasing of GPS for the golf carts, GPS units for the golf carts for a period of four years. We have this before you in the hopes that we can get this done quickly and signed by Rick so that we can then get to take delivery of those golf carts prior to the May one, twenty twenty one delivery date. That's the time that we, you know, expect to receive the new fleet of golf carts with these GPS units on them. Apologize for the error in the memo that's in there. Again, this pertains specifically to the GPS units for the golf course, for the golf carts. And I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions about GPS, not golf carts?
Just FYI, if I were to make a motion, I'm going to deputize the attorney to change the wording to reflect the true state of affairs to supersede Scott Reed's mistakes, correct?
I I will be happy to revise the ordinance before it is published to make it clear that what is being proved is a lease purchase agreement for GPS units that go on golf carts, not for the golf carts themselves.
Okay, thank you, Tim. It takes a, takes a village to recover Scott.
All right, anyone in the public wish to comment on the lease agreement for GPS units? Please use Q and A function at the bottom of your screen, beginning now you have thirty seconds.
While we're waiting, Eric, a couple of things. One, lease purchase agreements are allowed under Tabor. They are a form of public financing. We're basically paying the purchase price for these GPS units over time. But the way it's structured is each annual payment is subject to the right of the council to appropriate or non-appropriate next year's payment. So the courts have said that is acceptable and will comply with Tabor.
Interesting. So you can welch on it if you want. Use Tabor, it's the welching mechanism. All right, public hearing is closed. Their motion?
Yes, I move we pass on first reading Council Bill number forty two, series twenty twenty, with the town attorney amending the wording to reflect GPS for a golf cart, not the golf cart itself.
Jeff, Jeffrey, this is an emergency ordinance, so so it will not not have a second reading. So with with your permission, could we change the motion to approve the approve the ordinance as an emergency ordinance?
So so do I have to say it again?
No, if you're okay with that, I don't think, I don't think the motion has been seconded yet.
Okay, I would like my motion to reflect Tim's addendum.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Anyone in the audience wish to comment? Use a Q and A function. You have thirty seconds. This is an emergency ordinance tonight, so there will not be a second. So this would be a good time to challenge it if that's your desire.
Keep in mind that an emergency ordinance requires five affirmative votes, and if it passes, it will become effective immediately tonight.
And the reason is emergency so we can act on it quickly to get the order in the mail?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right, that's thirty seconds. Is there a motion?
Do I have to do it again?
Oh, you already started.
Did I motion?
I think you gave an extra public comment, but that's okay.
Sorry about that. I don't even know what I'm thinking. Any other discussion?
I need a drink.
I'm seriously. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, that's how we signify an emergency ordinance with an emergency.
Did you guys get this? What is this?
Everybody did.
Whoa. Okay.
Okay, we have one resolution this evening. It's Resolution Number twenty five, series two thousand and twenty. Resolution approving updates to and adopting the revised Town of Breckenridge Title VI Plan related to transportation planning improvements and transportation services.
I'll do this one. As a recipient of federal funds, the Town of Breckenridge is required to have this Title VI Plan in place and to amend it and update it periodically. Jen Bullen's memo is in the council's agenda packet explaining that this this new plan contains only minor updates and modifications to the prior plan. She's was unable to be here this evening, or at least she wanted me to do this. And I think, I know it's her recommendation that this resolution be adopted.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this? You have thirty seconds. Use the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen, please.
I'd like to use this thirty seconds to say that we did not have a BOSSAC meeting, and I have nothing to report.
Oh, that was well done.
Oh, nice.
Did anybody read that alert?
No, what did I can't find it.
It's just a reminder, it's a reminder of the no gathering after ten PM.
Oh, we better hurry up and get out of here.
Means Jeffrey can't go out after the meeting.
And mandatory closure of bar and restaurants at nine thirty PM.
There you go.
I've been doing some day drinking. I am bed late.
Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass Resolution Number twenty five, series twenty twenty, Resolution approving updates to and adopting the revised Town of Breckenridge Title VI Plan related to transportation, planning improvements, and transportation services.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, roll call, please.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, we do have the twenty twenty one proposed budget and twenty twenty one, twenty twenty five capital improvement plan public hearing. Hello, Brian.
Hello, sir. Mr. Mayor and council, each year while we adopt the mill levy by ordinance, the budget is adopted by resolution, which only requires one reading and one hearing. But it's always been our practice to have two budget hearings, and that is what we are doing tonight. The proposed budget, the proposed twenty twenty one budget was linked in the agenda, and the purpose of having this extra hearing is to give the public that one extra meeting to come on in and comment or ask questions. In my fourteen years, Warner showed up once to the extra budget hearing, so maybe this, maybe this will be the year, we'll see.
Hey, thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian about the budget? No, a public hearing is open. You have thirty seconds to comment on the twenty twenty one budget and the twenty one, twenty twenty five capital improvement plan. We have done a lot of work on this this year, given the current situation of COVID. And Brian, thank you to you and your staff, and actually to all the staffs that have to put budgets together. It was quite a job this year. It's tough to cut as much as you guys cut, and we do appreciate it. All right, that closes the public hearing for the budget. Is there a motion?
I move we pass the twenty twenty one proposed budget.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Yeah, this is extra hearing. We'll do that. Good practice, though. Next meeting, Jeffrey.
You know, it's God punish me for giving Scott Reed a hard time. I made two mistakes in a row.
I gotta get worse, too. Just so you guys know, the CDC is now saying that masks protect the wearers and those around them. So all of you who've been wearing masks like you should, benefit for you, too. Always good to hear. All right, planning commission decisions. There any call-ups or any discussions, Aaron?
Yeah, I would like to discuss the Parkway Center temporary parking lot. So my concerns to answer Dennis's question from earlier, it's that I know in the in the peak of winter, when when everything is busy, City Market is just tough already, and getting in and out of that parking lot currently is already hard and frustrating. And so I worry in this year, especially if this could be an extra frustration for 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 everybody using City Market, but especially our locals. And I worry that the ingress and egresses are just not built for the additional volume. It's quite common when you try to leave City Market on Park Avenue, it can really get backed up, and that's without an additional one hundred and sixty five space parking lot. I completely understand the reasoning to have it. I know that that's also another strain in our community is that we don't have the parking that we normally do and that we don't have the buses that we normally do or the bus capacity that we normally do. So I I understand both sides. I just really worried about the impact to our community, mainly our locals trying to use the grocery store at at different hours throughout the day. But yeah, so that's, that's my thought.
Okay. Would you rather her just make a motion and not have any real discussion on this, or? Tim, Barry?
I'm sorry, say that again, Eric.
Would you rather her just make a motion now to call it up and see if it goes anywhere? Or can we have some limited discussion? What is your?
No, at this point, Eric, I'm perfectly fine with the council having whatever discussion it feels like is appropriate. If Aaron wants to make the motion to call it up, that's perfectly fine, or the council can do the discussion now and and then see if there is a motion.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim. Dennis, did you want to go ahead and ask the questions that you wanted to earlier?
No, I think Aaron answered the question I was looking for, so thank you.
Great. Kelly?
So I think, I think it's a great question. I definitely think it's a good thing to consider. I appreciate the input we received earlier. One thing I was thinking about that might be helpful is that, you know, one of our parking lots will be closed right there. So although the ingress and egress to City Market, there won't be, that'll be what it is. But Park, hopefully, as long as people aren't driving into town to realize there's no parking and driving back out of town, Park should have a little less action on it. So maybe that will help with, you know, congestion in that area despite having another one hundred and sixty five spaces.
That's actually a good thought, Kelly.
You actually have about three hundred less cars that would be on Park Avenue.
On Park, not at that ingress egress, but.
Anyone else?
Eric, maybe, maybe it would be appropriate for me to point out that this is a development permit, and the decision on a development permit really needs to be code-based. And the issues that Aaron has raised, while valid, but really, I I'm not sure they tie back to a code problem.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. With that being said, Aaron, would you like to make a motion?
Well, if there isn't a related code, then it doesn't sound like it's it's valid. I mean, if there isn't a code regarding, you know, what what the ingresses and egresses can handle, then I mean, I guess no.
Okay.
I just feel like it's a bad fit for that location. But yeah, if there's, if there's nothing to go on, you know, I don't want to make it a vacant motion either that we can't follow up with.
Fair enough.
Let's ask Mark. Mark, are you familiar with the with the point analysis on this one? Are there any code issues that?
There is no.
There's no code issues with this, Tim, right now. It was, my recollection, just a zero points, no negative or positive points associated with it. And really, a lot of the, what you see in front of you is actually a request for a variance from the typical standards that we have for like, we would typically require that a parking lot be paved. We would typically require that a certain percentage of the parking lot have landscaping, things like that. So we've, because this is a temporary situation, we've proposed to have a variance for that, from those requirements because it'd only be for a one-year period.
So I guess the council could overrule the variance is what they could probably do if they wanted to, right? And then it wouldn't apply. They could, they wouldn't be able to meet code. So if the council didn't support a variance for this project is probably what you would do, a call-up and, and overrule if a majority of the council felt that they wanted to do that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just feel like it still would be false because it's not to do with, I, I have no issue with it not being paved or not having landscaping. If it, if it were located somewhere else, I, I would be in support of it. I'm, yeah, I'm not even opposed to the additional parking. I'm just opposed to the strain that it will create for our community. So no, I, I, I don't want to make a motion if it doesn't fit within the overall strain that I feel the extra cars will be to that area of our town.
Excellent. All right, anyone else? Thank you, Erin. Thanks for bringing that up, too, Erin. I think that was an important discussion to have. All right, report of the town manager. And staff. Nothing? Or a report of the mayor and council members. Erin already gave her amazing report.
That was really a good one, yeah. She really kind of made up for her mistake on the parking lot.
Dude, come on, man. Dick, do you have anything?
Well, we talked about events. Equity, we are entering into the interview stage. We got well over forty applicants for the commission, which was great. We have some super qualified folks. I think we are planning, we, we had a meeting and, and had a hard, had the, the tough task to, to determine who we were going to interview. We're going to interview, I believe, twenty, twenty-ish in the near future. We're trying to figure that schedule out now. So. That's it.
Thank you. Dennis, anything?
Yes, the Breckenridge Heritage Alliance has a board meeting tomorrow. And the Summit Historical Society will be retrieving items from the archives next week. And every, every precaution is going to be made during that retrieval so that all precautions with face masks, social distancing will be met.
Excellent. Thank you, Dennis. Carol? Carol, do you have anything?
No, I had a work conflict, so Dick covered me on events.
Excellent. Kelly?
No, child, we already covered childcare.
Okay. Jeffrey, you have anything to say, just because?
Well, we had a housing committee meeting today, and, and you'll be updated when we're ready to do that.
Were you amazing as usual?
Yeah, Dick was like absent for a while. He had like something, because he's on dial-up, and we lost him, and no one even noticed. Jeffrey, you're getting your digs in on everybody.
He's gonna get hit by a car when he leaves his house.
He doesn't leave after ten o'clock.
Carol's been exempt. I've left her alone because I'm, I'm scared.
Are there any other matters this evening? Raise your hand if you have something. Yes, Kelly?
Well, all I would say is that, you know, with these surging cases, the public has a lot of control over how they can know whether they're putting themselves in harm's way, and our essential workers such as police and firemen, they really don't have control when they go into a situation of whether, whether the people they're coming into contact have with have COVID. So please, please be smart and be responsible and start making some good decisions that can get us through this winter because it's not just you're, you're, you're affecting a lot of people who are working their butts off for this town and to keep us all safe.
That is a great message, Kelly. Thank you for that.
Well said.
Anyone else? All right, on that. We're out of here. Thanks, everyone.
Good government, everybody. Thank you.